Hey Zach, did you get my message earlier?
Which one was that?
Um, I'm gonna see if I can make you a host. My power was down um for a few hours today. And I just, I had a hard time getting everything up and running again, rebooting the modem and the all that stuff. And I just, but you're um, you're just gonna be here for the study session, aren't you?
I'm not sure, last time I, we were, like, when we did the um, staff meeting, it sounded like Jess might have wanted me for the night, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But if you need some help, I'm happy to stick around.
Well, I'm just gonna make you a host in case my power goes out.
Okay, sure.
Oh, it says, do you want to change the host to Zach? Maybe I'll just make you a co-host and hope for the best here.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't think it's gonna go back out, it's not been doing anything, but I know right, even went over to Rachel's neighborhood and down Lake Mary Road and
Yeah, I heard about that.
Yeah, so I don't know what caused it.
Yeah, well, if you make me a co-host and you uh, don't stay on, wouldn't it just default to me anyway?
I'm not sure how that works. We've not had that situation, I know my, my Zoom has shut down before during meetings and restarted.
Me too.
And it's always still going, so.
Yeah, well, go ahead and make me a co-host, I'm assuming I'll be around. Looks good, thanks.
Alright. No, I didn't have my, wasn't looking at my chat.
Where is?
I don't think Tammy's gonna join us today.
She said she was driving back from Colorado, so she was gonna try and make it, but.
I don't see her on there, so.
No, I don't, I don't think she'll be here, at least not for the study session.
No, we heard she wasn't gonna be on, I think she wasn't gonna make it back. I think that's right.
Are we going to, for the, for the hearing, are we gonna stick to the um, direct message instead of everyone can see? Like, it's set up right now, only goes to the hosts and co-hosts?
I don't know, you need, have to ask Marty, Marty, are you there?
Uh, yeah, we've muted everybody, so they, well, turned off the chat unless they can go directly to a co-host or host if they're having a technical issue.
Yeah, that, that's what I was hoping that you were gonna do after the last couple of meetings.
Yeah, good idea. Don, if you have to chair, do you need the um, the procedure readout?
No, I already got it, I was anticipating having to do that.
Okay, alright.
Thank you though.
You're welcome.
Just for Ben Nelly? Yes, are you there?
I can text him if you need him. This is Zach.
Yeah, Zach, I'm ready to start whenever you guys are.
Hey Zach, thanks, I'm, I'm there, doing the whole, forgetting them, that I was muted.
It's hard to hear you when you're muted.
It is, it is. Alright, well, uh, good evening, everyone who's on the public hearing. I see that we have um, Vice Chair Don Walters. And as I'm glancing at my screen, I am not seeing Chair Tom, Tammy Ontiveros with us yet. Um, Commissioner Walters, did Commissioner Ontiveros get ahold of you and let her know, let you know that she was traveling today?
Last week she did.
Okay, okay, I would be optimistic that she might be here in time for the actual hearing, but your study session is kicking off now. Um, and it's not necessary to have a, to have a quorum uh, for the, for the study session, she could still participate in the public hearing if she makes it.
Okay. Alright. We'll cross our fingers for her.
We will, we will. So, um, between myself and Marty, I'm gonna try to count some noses here. I see Commissioner Williams, I see Commissioner Ruggles, I see Commissioner Clifford, Burton, Walters, Best. So I am seeing that we have a quorum. Marty, you seeing the same thing I am?
I see that as well.
Okay, well, um, Commissioner Walters, I guess you'll serve as the, as the chair for our study session, appreciate that. Marty, if you could please, um, go ahead and record the meeting for all members of the public and planning and zoning commissioners who are on the meeting. This, the study session is in fact, a open public meeting and we record it as such. Um, however, the study session from now from four thirty until five thirty is not for public input. Uh, the commissioners can ask applicants uh, to answer questions or give a little input for their study session when we address study session items. So, uh, Commissioner Walters, Chair Walters, okay with you if we go ahead and kick off the study session?
Yes sir, please do.
Okay, thank you, welcome to your study session for today, February twenty-fourth. Um, we are going to discuss public hearing items that will be on your agenda next month, Wednesday, March thirty-first. Um, we only have one item on your public hearing. Again, we'd like to let you know what's coming, so you have an idea. We'd like, um, we'd like the commissioners to ask questions. Let us know if you have any special concerns about the use of the area, and we'll be happy to, to look further into those as staff. When we prepare a staff report on the item, we do avoid discussing the merits of a case. We certainly avoid discussing being able to make the findings or not being able to make the findings during the study session, we have to reserve that for the public hearing. With that, I would point out, you have one item on your study session for public hearing next month, CUP twenty-one oh-two. And Zach is managing it, it is a conditional use permit for a campground in the Woodland Ranch area. I see Zach sharing his screen, so Zach, if you could go ahead and discuss the uh, the Nomad Campground with the commissioners, thank you.
Sorry about that, I was muted for a minute there. Uh, thank you Jess, and thank you commissioners. This is the CUP for what we're calling Nomads Pad Campground. And I have up on here a vicinity map for you, so you can see the core of the valley area here. Here's Highway one eighty and Highway sixty-four. We're looking up north here at this property, it's not far away from another similar campground case that you will be hearing tonight. But this is the general vicinity of it, you see it's all surrounded by the general zone properties. And here is a more close-up aerial, so this is the property, it's vacant right now. You'll see that there are some home sites, I believe they're manufactured homes in sort of the general area, and they're taking their access off of this road here to the east. Uh, here is a site plan, so basically it's a twenty-unit campground. And for ten of their units, they're planning the clamping tents that you all become fairly familiar with now. Uh, there are some structures over here, this by the way, was going to be on the hearing for tonight. Uh, but there was an issue with posting the legal noticing for the case, so it's been uh, referred now over to the next hearing, the end of March hearing. Um, the applicant is showing some structures over here, which you've seen before, there's some glass pyramid structures. And staff is going to meet with the applicant and discuss uh, because we're not quite sure if this exactly fits the definition of what is acceptable for a campground, but, or sorry, for camp sites. Uh, typically, they are temporary structures that are covered in canvas or something like that, the applicant has said that these would be um, sort of built up and modular structures for under a hundred and eighty days, which is kind of what the, it's what the building uh, code says is temporary and doesn't need a building permit. But staff still needs to discuss with the applicant whether or not this meets our definition of what a campsite is. The applicant has said that they want to maybe make this glass some sort of opaque. Um, in which case, and if we, you know, once we talk to the applicant, we would want that sort of thing to be earth tone colored. But again, we need to, staff is gonna discuss with the applicant whether or not that's something that um, is doable in the first place. So that'll be figured out probably next week, certainly it'll be figured out by the time the staff report is completed for you all. Um, we do have in the middle here, so they take their access from the east in, and this would be all compacted gravel. They don't yet have their full plan for um, maintenance and improvement of all the roadways leading to the property, which is something that is required in the zoning ordinance for a campground in the G-zone. That's something that we've conditioned before, and we can possibly figure out after the entitlement phase and before any building permits. Um, they also haven't yet come, uh, they've completed sort of a basic plan of what they would do for fire and emergency services through High Country Fire, which is in Red Lake area, a bit south. And that hasn't yet been approved by the fire chief, but that's another thing that we've sort of um, before we've approved it, a condition for that, the commission has. And we've gone on the backend and finished that up administratively with staff, all the final different approvals of that. Other than that, the applicant is, so this is twenty different units, so that means this is a ten-acre property, it meets the maximum density for campgrounds in the general zone. Um, they do have a basic neighborhood compatibility plan, which is required when the campground is adjacent to residentially zoned property, or especially when there are existing residences around. Um, the plan seems pretty good so far, but staff is asking for, they had a little landscape plan, and I apologize, I didn't bring up the landscape plan, I don't have it right in front of me. They sort of a little bit of landscaping in this general area, staff is asking, and the applicant seems amenable to doing some sort of opaque fencing around the property and some landscaping to help sort of buffer and screen the use from adjacent uses. So that's another item that's sort of forthcoming, and that will be something that is attached to the staff report and analyzed in the staff report. Uh, but other than that, most of the, all of the provisions, as I could tell so far um, of the zoning ordinance for campgrounds in the general zone are met. Um, but I'm happy if the commission has any notes, comments, or questions to go through those.
Zach, this is Saad, I've got a question for you. It's a little bit of a generic question, but on all of these campgrounds, and they're popping up like uh, mushrooms out there, the roads coming through are easements on private property.
Hmm, right.
Years ago, back in my youth, um, we did deny a summer camp off of seventeen because the commission felt that um, it directed too much traffic past houses. And the road that went in was just as this is easements on private property. Um, do we get into that issue ever here? I mean, we're not bringing it up. Uh, so I guess direct, the direct question is, is legally, when there's an easement across private property, is it open to any commercial use? And then depending on the answer to that question, there's a judgment question for the commission and possibly the supervisors, whether um, people purchase these lots for residential use, and then suddenly there's a commercial use driving across their land.
Right, Commissioner Best, that's a good question, and uh, I'm glad you raised the question. So, when we went through writing the campground portion of the ordinance, um, there were a number of different considerations we had for exactly the items that you're bringing up. So, uh, under the campground section of the zoning ordinance, section three, it says campground shall front on and have direct access on a road excepted for maintenance by the county or other jurisdiction. The access requirement may be waived by the Planning and Zoning Commission or Board of Supervisors if the additional findings of fact are made below, and I think all of the items sort of um, encapsulate the, the kind of question that you're asking. So the first waiver criteria, and I, I'll go through this, and I believe I've gone through this um, in the other campground cases that we've had. So the first uh, waiver criteria, and, and you all, at the end of the day, are the ones that decide whether or not these criteria are met. Staff has a recommendation in the staff report and analysis of these. But the first is, the granting of the waiver will not diminish the ability for emergency service providers to access the property and carry out their services. The second is, the granting of the waiver will not put an undue maintenance burden or impact on others that legally use the access. See that the granting of the waiver is consistent with applicable engineering standards set by the Public Works Department or Engineering Division of the Community Development Department, excuse me, Department. And the last is that the granting of waiver will not have a negative impact on neighboring properties or improvements, especially as related to dust or and traffic safety. So oftentimes, um, staff is asking for the applicant's narrative to address how they feel they meet all these criteria. And staff in the report is analyzing whether or not we feel as staff that the criteria are met. And at the end of the day, it's up for the commission to decide whether those are all met. So I, I think that, hopefully that answers your question.
Uh, yeah, that starts the conversation anyway, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Zach, I have a question for you on this, which I think is pertinent to a, a number of these cases. Are they proposing um, staffing uh, during the uh, period that they will operate this campground, twenty-four-seven staffing?
Uh, Commissioner Ruggles, let, let me take a look, I know that a lot of these campgrounds are, and that's especially something that was part of when we come up with the firewise plan. A lot of times the fire chiefs want to make sure that there are staff to monitor uh, the fire pits that are on the property. Uh, let's see if I can just find staff in this narrative. I don't have that information readily available for you, but if you have comments as to whether or not that's needed or not, um, those would be good notes for me as I go through and analyze the case.
Okay, just, just to amplify that a little bit, the reason I asked about this is, as you pointed out earlier, um, this abuts property that already has residences on the property, I believe on three sides. And uh, some of the concerns that have been expressed over operations like this um, are by nearby residents about how the campground is used, so that's, that's why I asked about this.
Understood, yeah, uh, definitely having staff there helps to kind of corral the customers, so I understand that for sure. Um, I don't see anywhere in this applicant's particular narrative, as I'm just screening through it right now, I didn't have a whole lot of time to review everything with it, but I don't see that that is part of it, currently. But I think it's a good point.
Okay, um, I, I think it's um, pertinent regardless of whether it is a CUP or rezoning request, so um, I think it's applicable in all cases, especially considering the makeup of the uh, the neighborhood in that area to the north and east of Valley.
Right, thank you, I'll, I'll, I'll discuss with the applicant and see what they're willing to do on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair Walters, uh, this is Jess McNeely again. Um, just wanna open it up if there's any other, we have plenty of time this evening uh, before your public hearing starts at five thirty, but are there any other questions of any of the planning and zoning commissioners on the uh, CUP twenty-one oh-two study session that Zach just discussed?
I don't have any, does any of the other commissioners, um, Bass, Burton, Clifford, Ruggles, Williams?
Uh, yeah, are, is anybody headed out that way? Uh, maybe we could take in a couple of these, of course, some of them are gonna be determined tonight, but uh, are you gonna do a, a posting out there?
Uh, Commissioner Best, go ahead.
Oh, uh, go, go ahead Zach, go ahead.
Well, I was just about to say, so I broke my leg skiing a couple of weeks ago, so I'm still recovering from that, and I'm not gonna be walking very soon. Uh, so, uh, I don't know if Jess or Bob might take over my case, but I'm, I'm sure one of them can try to coordinate with you on that.
I'll drive you out there, I just had my second COVID shot, so I'm safe, and I got two good legs, so.
Good for you.
Somebody email me if you're going out, or if I can help, and, because I, I'd be interested in going out and taking a look.
We'll, we'll do that, Saad.
Okay.
I'd be interested too, so put me on that email list.
Yeah, would you put, uh, put me on that email list also?
Okay.
I've also had my second COVID shot, so I think we can uh, do a little more onsite work here in the future.
You don't have to drive out there with the windows open, right?
True.
Okay, if there's no other questions, um, Chair Walters, I'll move on with the agenda here.
Please go to the update.
Okay, so commissioners, um, just to give you a update on what's going on in our department on item one here, uh, we're excited to tell you that we've hired a new planner, Kelly Bingham. She's a recent grad from Arizona State with a master's in planning. And we anticipate that she'll be starting with us um, on March twenty-second. So we're hoping to have her available at your next hearing, uh, that same week that's, that she's starting. Um, so very excited to have, have a new staff member on board, and excited to have you all meet her. And it, she is very excited about moving to the Flagstaff area, being in Coquenino County, and uh, and getting out of the heat for the summer, I'm sure. On item number two, the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan update is continuing. And of course, um, Commissioners Clifford and Ruggles are both on that committee. Um, they've essentially wrapped up their vision statements for, all the way down to vision for each of their chapters. They're working on goals and policies, and the committee right now is really working on their public outreach. So certainly Commissioners Clifford or Ruggles, if you wanted to give any input to the rest of the planning and zoning commissioner, what's going on there? Uh, and I believe Melissa's with us, and she can give us an update on, on um, the DDTF update as well. So Melissa, if you had anything you wanted to add to that, go ahead.
Thank you Jess and commissioners, um, we are working through the, um, as Jess said, the the goals and policies, we've gone through three of the, of the different chapter sections, and uh, we've had a lot of online public participation, so word is getting out within the community that this effort is underway. Um, and we're hoping to organize a virtual open house and a self-guided driving tour pretty soon.
Alright, thanks Melissa. Any questions from any of the commissioners on the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan update? Alright, well, also with Melissa, uh, we are working on an update to the zoning ordinance with the utility scale renewable energy ordinance, we call it the Rio, the Renewable Energy Ordinance. Um, we are scheduled for a Board of Supervisors work session on April sixth, and um, we have had planning and zoning commissioners, I know Commissioner Best has been very involved with that committee. So, uh, Commissioner Best and/or Melissa, if you'd like to let the other commissioners know what is going on with that process.
And Commissioner Ruggles has had a lot of great input.
And Commissioner Ruggles as well, absolutely. I was, I was just thinking about the, about all of our discussion about uh, doing the Pythagorean theorem and angle analysis, angle analysis for setbacks from property lines, that Commissioner Best uh, has been involved in.
I'll let the commissioners speak first on that.
Absolutely.
That has been, that has been some fun high school math. Basically, we had a, a fellow named, named Fab Johnson, who lives out next to Perrin Ranch, and um, he sees cell, he sees the, the wind towers as back door. And he was proposing that we do setbacks based on the angle from the horizon to the top of the tower. And he was proposing, I think, four degrees, and so we had to uh, figure out what a tangent was in trigonometry, and anyway, if you multiply the tower height times fourteen point three, that gives you a four degrees as long as both you and the base of the tower are on the same level. So it got a little confusing, but it did give us the sense that um, the tower height uh, is important to neighbors, and we are seeing Perrin Ranch has towers that are four hundred feet tall, we approved eight hundred foot towers um, at a Chevalon Butte, and we have heard rumors of towers over a thousand feet, so it makes a big difference um, how tall the towers are in relation to what you see when you, when you look at your back door. So we're trying to make sense of that, and uh, I don't know that the angle idea is gonna fly, but uh, Melissa and some folks met last week at Buffalo Park to play with angles, unfortunately, I was playing with the grandkids out of town, so I didn't make that meeting, but maybe Melissa could report on that.
Yeah, I, I'd like to add a comment to what Saad said about that. Uh, I think for a lot of people, uh, using an angle is a little difficult to visualize. Um, if you say, well, the difference here is uh, eight degrees or fourteen degrees. Uh, I'm used to doing this uh, with a lot of things, and uh, I can tell you that relating it to a fairly accurate angle is, is difficult at best, and it's a matter of um, perspective, uh, it's something that any of you who are photographers know very, very well. Uh, and it's simply uh, been a proposed way of quantifying the perspective. Uh, when you are looking at something like an eight hundred foot uh, windmill, oh, say a half mile or a mile away. Um, about the only other way to uh, get somebody to look at the angle uh, accurately would be to take something like a digital level and uh, hold it up while you're looking at something at a distance, and at a known distance. Uh, otherwise, uh, without something like that, or some type of a device like that, you can uh, get an accurate angle. I think it's very difficult, but it's a, it's a, um, I think it's a good way of I think it's very difficult, but it's a, it's a, I think it's a good way of starting the conversation and I'm not sure where we're going to wind up with it, but, um, it's one way to do it. Perspective is a little difficult, even from, so even for someone who's experienced in judging perspective at a distance.
And you also have to remember that, uh, the private property that we're looking at it from might be at a different elevation than the tower. So if the tower's more likely to be at a high elevation because it gives you better wind. Uh, you've got to figure that in as well. So it's complicated, but it's, it's it's obvious that, uh, the view shed issue is a very important issue with these wind towers.
Yeah.
And so we're, we're just, uh, we're having a, a long conversation about it, but I think it's an important one.
Yeah, Saad brought up a very good point, uh, which was brought up, um, when talking about photographic simulations. And, uh, the Chevalon Butte Wind Farm was one of the examples used. And the change in the terrain, uh, from the south to the north was something that I brought up because it, it tends to drop. So the perspective you have, uh, from the, say the south end to the north would be that the windmill would be smaller than it actually is. So, uh, that was another consideration we discussed.
Another, another aspect of this, which, which I find interesting. We've basic, basically we have defined something, we have not defined something, but we have set down a marker called a visible resource. And we put that in the glossary and we've said that we're going to try to not impact visual resources without defining them in detail. Because that could take another three years. We also have used the words sacred, uh, views. I can't remember quite what we've done, but there are tribal concerns as well as just aesthetic concerns. And that is another whole, um, issue that is very hard to define and again, could take years to figure out, but you know, we've done this before. We, we've successfully, I think, approved two wind farms that worked out pretty well. And, um, we're trying to make it a little more organized in the future, but there are some, some big questions as more of these things pop up. We don't, we don't want Northern Arizona to go from a world-class viewscape to a wind farm viewscape.
Thank you both for that. That was a great recap of where we are and, um, Jess, I don't know if you wanted to take a look at a possible work session for the commission. We've got one coming up with the board as an introduction.
Yeah. Yeah, I was hoping actually during the, their retreat, we would at least
Okay.
Uh, do an update right on that and, um, and the board's work sessions. Um, a little more focused, I believe, on process, on, on how we, how we're getting to, uh, and ordinance. And, um, following that, then I'm hoping we can schedule, uh, map out when, when we can do some good study sessions with the, with the commission. We have something ready to, to talk about. Um, any, any, thanks. Any other comments from anyone, uh, staff or, or Commissioners on the, on item number four there on the, uh, the renewable energy, excuse me, item, yeah. Item three, actually, the renewable energy ordinance. Okay, well, item four and Melissa, um, you can give an update here is just letting you know that the uh, community development staff is coordinating with the city of Flagstaff staff on, um, preparing for, uh, their lead on the Flagstaff Regional Plan Update. So just wanted to see if anyone, um, anyone had any questions or comments. There's no commitments yet. Uh, as you all know, we have a relatively new, um, Board of Supervisors and, uh, this will be a, a, a long and big process for the city of Flagstaff. And we make wonderful use, we make great use of the Flagstaff Regional Plan. It's an important, um, plan in our nesting of plans. Uh, so we are here to support them, but we're not sure what, what the full county support picture will look like. Uh, at, at a minimum, it'll be, um, Melissa and myself and any of our other staff that, uh, is able to assisting the city with the update to that plan. So any questions from any Commissioners or Melissa, if there's anything you wanted, any, uh, bits of information you wanted to pass on to the, to the Commissioners about the flag regional plan update?
I think one thing that's interesting to, to remember is that the, um, the population spread, it's about 80% of the regional plan population is in the city of Flagstaff and then the remainder of the 20% of that regional plan population is in the county. So it's kind of that 80/20 mix, although the land mass is, is different and I don't have the numbers on that. So you know, there is a substantial number of county residents that live within the regional plan boundary and that are impacted by those policies. So it's a, it's a long process and the city's doing a lot of work, uh, behind the scenes already. Mainly organizing and reorganizing and getting some of the data that's needed to start that process. So we're, we're very, as Jess said, we're very happy to be able to support them in that effort.
Uh, Melissa, do you know if there'll be a community advisory group or how, how will it be structured?
They're, they are proposing several types of, um, advisory groups and they're waiting to get um, further direction from the city council on what that will look like, but they, there'll be a very robust citizen participation planning effort. So multiple ways to be involved in, um, in that capacity. It hasn't been formalized yet though. It's still in the drafting phase.
Yeah, I know there was some, I don't know how to characterize it, confusion, uh, after a very long process last time. So you might check in with some of the people who participated, some of whom are in the room here. Cause it, it seemed like, well, it seemed like a suboptimal process last time and I wasn't involved, so I don't know everything, but, uh, it'd be good to check in and make sure it's optimal this time.
I, I can weigh in just a little bit. I was on that for four and a half years. The, the one concern that I have is, is that the county is going to be adequately represented in both the decision of how to set this up and in all the conversations. So please, you know, keep me in the loop on those.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. That's important feedback and I'll make sure to communicate that with, to Sarah.
Melissa, uh, I have the same, uh, concerns that Commissioner Walters expressed. I find the 80/20 split rather interesting because that is currently the, uh, the, uh, urban suburban versus rural split that exists across the country now. So
Interesting.
Being underrepresented, uh, for those of us who are without a county, uh, is a real concern.
Okay, thank you. I would definitely pass that on. And we'll make sure that it, we are involved early on in this process, uh, both Jess and I. So, um, the city is being very inclusive that way. And so we'll, we certainly have good communication going at least at this stage. With the city and we can sort of that concern known.
Trying to phrase it positively, um, everybody at the city I work with is great. Everybody I work with at the county is great. The county system is so much simpler and more and less opaque than the cities. And I don't know if you've run into that yet, but, um, but there seems to be a bureaucracy level at the city, which is incomprehensible if you just, if you're just working with the county. Uh, so for whatever that's worth. But like I say, I love everybody. No, I don't think there are any bad guys. Maybe it's just the way cities are. But it sure is different trying to get something done at city.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you.
One thing that I'd like to add is that last time Tiffany was on our side. Tiffany was representing from the county. So we'll, we'll have to remind her to look out for us.
I'll certainly second that.
Okay, we'll remind her about that too.
All right. Any other comments on the regional plan update? Thanks. Well, the next one we would like to discuss with you, Melissa's here to talk to you about it as well, is our partnership in the Route 66 Brownfields EPA Grant. So Melissa, if you wanted to give the Commissioners a quick update on that?
Absolutely. Thank you. And did everybody receive the flyer that I sent you last month? That could be distributed to your networks?
Yes, and I do distribute it.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you for the flyer.
Thank you. So, uh, today, and I may have given you this update last month as well, we have one property in the county that's been nominated and I believe that will qualify for, um, an assessment, assessment funding under this grant program. We still have quite a bit of funding available. We'll be, um, we've mailed letters out to about 16 property owners based on an analysis that StanTech did, looking at possible properties. So we'll be following up with phone calls and more letters. You know, any, any, um, additional promotion that you all can help with would be appreciated because that's kind of what this project is at this point. It's more of a get the word out. Because we have, we have funding available for properties that need these types of assessments. One of the, well, we, we probably have some exciting news that we need to hold off on, but I think as far as a county property until we get more information, but there's some additional, good news that we may be hearing about in the next few weeks. So stay posted for that. That came out as, um, as a result of this project. But anyone who's, who's, uh, listening in from the public, uh, the, this grant is a, um, a grant from the EPA that has funding available to assist property owners with evaluating underutilized, abandoned, or, um, or other properties that may have potential, um, brownfields issues such as lead-based paint or, um, oil contamination from abandoned gas tanks or asbestos issues. So it's totally voluntary. It's very simple application process. And, um, if anyone knows of any properties in the county that might be, property owners that might be interested in this, uh, send them our way. Where the grant is being managed by NACOG and so the application is actually available on their website, but we can all certainly direct you to that from ours. I believe it's also on the community development webpage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa, um, is there any chance that these brownfields could be candidates for, uh, solar sites, solar energy sites? I, 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 from what you just said, it sounded more like structures than, you know, 300 acres that used to be a factory or something.
Sure. I mean, anything that, I mean, that is a potential reuse, um, for a property. A lot of times sites like that need the cleanup first and that's what these grants are intended to help push along. You know, are the assessments to understand number one, if or what, you know, contamination there is. And then the second, second step would be to do the cleanup and then, then they would be available for reuse. And certainly something like that is a very, um, if there's enough land, that would be a very appropriate reuse for a site like that. In terms of a renewable energy project. So, um, it's just, you know, at this point, it's a matter of getting property owners interested in having their sites evaluated. Based on the analysis that StanTech did, there were, I think, probably 30 likely sites in the county that due to their current, uh, tax assessor status, um, you know, may have been shut down or, um, underutilized for those different issues. So they had a, a really interesting way of analyzing those. If anyone's interested, we can certainly share that information.
That's, uh, one, one of the things that we have discussed a little bit with the Rio Renewable Energy Ordinance is using brownfields, uh, as opposed to going out and using, uh, just, uh, unused property. And so if any of those have significant real estate, um, that, that would be appropriate for maybe a solar array.
I don't recall any large sites that way, but there, there certainly could be other types of sites, um, any, you know, old mining sites, things like that could be potential brownfield sites that could be reused, uh, reused for renewable energy projects. But I don't.
Maybe some of the, uh, the cinder mines and that, that sort of thing around.
Potentially, I, yeah, we haven't had it come forward yet. Um,
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on the Route 66 Brownfields EPA Grant? All right, thanks. The final item on your department update, item six, is just letting you know that the county is still in phase one of reopening operations. Um, we all see the news, sounds, uh, sounds like several of our Commissioners have gotten vaccinated. Uh, we're all hoping for moving on to phase two and, and, uh, and getting, getting ourselves opened up for public hearings eventually. Um, but, um, most of y'all will hear about that in the news, uh, as, as soon as we know anything about that. Any questions on the county's COVID policy and phasing operations of opening backup?
The only question I have is when will we actually have real meetings again?
That's, that'll be, that'll be based on, uh, on the phasing, um, Chair Walters. Um, I, if, if I were to, to guess, I would think that sometime into, um, the summer or fall will be when the county, uh, allows us to have, to have open public meetings. Um, one of the things that has been discussed, we've brought it up several times. Um, uh, we as local government planners hear about it in our professional publications is the whole world has gotten used to doing a lot of meetings like this online and that is a certain amount of, of accessibility for some people, um, to be able to attend online. So one of the things we would anticipate is that the county overall, not just planning and zoning commission, but probably Board of Supervisors and other groups as well, will continue to use, uh, a web-based platform, um, for, um, for anyone to attend. Uh, be that, uh, staff, um, appointed officials, elected officials, the public. Um, so, um, so we're seeing that it does give some freedom. Uh, however, we all acknowledge there's a, there's a big difference between a, a virtual meeting and an in-person meeting. So, um, uh, again, I think, I think you all know is, is probably almost as quickly as we at staff do when, when news comes out that, uh, that the county is, is moving up in their phases.
And Jess, would you envision that as an either or or, or both end?
Cool. Um, if, if I were to, if I were to envision and that's to include discussions that the, that have taken place internal at the county with county management. Um, uh, Commissioner Best, I would envision that it will be a both and. Um, as, as you all well remember, as large as our county is, we've had Commissioners in the past who attended via telephone. Yeah, sometimes those Commissioners would attend, um, uh, in person and sometimes they would call in on the phone in order to, uh, be able to participate in the public hearing. So that's, that's the way, um, that's the way that we would anticipate based on discussions we've had, that, uh, future meetings will look is that there will be options for, um, for Commissioners, uh, potentially for staff and, uh, and for the public to be able to participate. And, and part of that logic probably goes to the fact that there will continue to be, um, some number of people who are not vaccinated. There will continue to be, um, people who are more vulnerable than others. And, uh, I think we, uh, many people have gotten used to convenience of not having to take a long, uh, take a long drive somewhere or arrange childcare, pet care, those kinds of things for even years.
Uh, I'm just interested in the pizza, you know. I'm just interested in the pizza, you know.
We'll try to, we'll try to order sneeze guards to, to put the pizza underneath for when we, for when we hand out the pizza.
All right.
Okay. Any questions, any other questions from the commissioners, Chair Walters, on the department update?
No, sir.
Okay, well, moving on to your board of supervisors update. Just to let you know, on February ninth, the board heard the Belmont RV storage change of zoning regulations. They approved the request based on your recommendation and conditions. On March ninth, the board will hear the Marble Canyon Resort Commercial Zone change. They will hear the Kachina Village G2RS zone change. That was a small zone change on some, some mismatched zoning Kachina Village on one parcel. And they will hear the Rocket Ranches zone change. On March tenth, the board will hear the Wagon Wheel Utility Facility Standpipe CUP Appeal. As of right now, we do not have hard dates for the Kachina Highlands Board Hearing, the Happy Jack Lodge Expansion Board Hearing, or the Two Guns Board Hearing. Each of those are awaiting something, some action that the applicant is taking. And when they get scheduled, we will let you all know. Any questions on any of the, any of the board hearings?
Quick question for you, Jess, on the Belmont RV Storage Facility. Pretty adamant about lighting for that. I take it that the board of supervisors approved what we all voted for a change to that condition without any changes. Is that correct?
Correct, Commissioner Ruggles. The boards, the board's approval was based on your recommended conditions.
I, the reason I ask is Commissioner Walters intervened to save me from having an argument with the applicant's representative based on science and engineering. Just keep in mind that I would argue a point, the points like I made with the brick wall. So I appreciate Commissioner Walters' intervention at that point. Thank you.
Happy, happy to help.
Very good. Anytime.
Okay, well, Chair Walters, I just got a text from, from Chair Ontiveros, and she does not see that she will make it in time for the public hearing. So congratulations. As the vice chair, we'll, we'll get to continue having you serve as the, as the chair this evening.
Happy to help, happy to help.
Appreciate it. So commissioners, on your commission and staff roundtable, we wanted to remind you that we're going to be holding a Planning and Zoning Commissioner Retreat online on Fri-, on Friday, March fifth. That's really right around the corner, from eight thirty till noon. We, I will be running this from our office. If any of you would like to, to attend this, this retreat from our office, we have a couple of options that we can look at. So just please let me know directly if any of you would like to attend your retreat from our office. We do have some topics set up for you. For, for starters, we will discuss with our county attorney's office staff, Aaron, will give a, just a basic legal refresher. It typically covers ex parte communication, open meeting laws, how you make your findings, et cetera. I'm going to give you an update on required submittals for hearings for the permitting process, or required submittals for hearings to go into the public hearing process. And the difference in the permitting process, a few things that we tried to clarify with, with updates to our zoning ordinance. We're going to talk about workforce housing. We are going to talk about grading permits on residential properties. We'll, we will take the opportunity to give you an update on the Renewable Energy Ordinance, where we can actually share some screens and, and discuss some things with you. We're hoping by then to have a little more, a few more decisions made with the advisory group on the Real Energy Ordinance. We're going to discuss noise concerns, and we're going to discuss noxious weeds. So please watch your email for invites. We'll try to get some materials out to you ahead of time. And of course, in the online meeting format that you've gotten used to, we'll be sharing our screens and, and providing some materials for you to see all at that time. So Chair Walters, any of the commissioners, any questions on your planned retreat?
The only question that, that I have is, Melissa, have you gotten with Devana about workforce housing?
Hey, Melissa, looks like you are muted.
Hello?
There she is.
Sorry.
Melissa, did you hear the question?
I'm sorry, I did not hear the question.
I asked if you had been able to get with Devana about workforce housing?
Oh, I have a list of things to do for that, but I have not gotten with her on that yet.
A while back, Commissioner Best brought up some workforce housing concerns. So I had a meeting with Devana. I had her come to my office and give me some ideas and some input. She's really knowledgeable and has real-world experience in doing this. So if you would get with her and maybe get, get some ideas, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hey Jess.
Yes.
I'd like to give you a commitment to be there in person since I, like, saw it. I have my second vaccination and really look forward to doing stuff like this in person rather than online.
Sure.
We are, we would have to wear masks, though, so I don't know how much that is.
I, I. Yeah, in, in county buildings, we do, yeah, in all of our open public spaces, we wear masks. And we, we kind of do our best to put ourselves in spaces where we can easily maintain six foot separate.
I think it goes without saying, at least on my part, that both the county managers and also the CDC guidelines are part of the deal.
Absolutely.
I want to double down on Devon McLaughlin. She is really great and has been around for a long time in the housing business. I also wanted to mention that Commissioner Williams and I had a meeting with our new boss, a couple of them actually, and Patrice Horstman, Supervisor Horstman. And she would have been interested in, in attending this. I don't know if you've extended an invitation to the supervisors. She can't, and she has asked her assistant, Julian Wolfe, to get a recording. So you might reach out to Julian and just work with him a little bit, but she said she'd like to at least be able to see a, see, see a recording of the meeting.
Absolutely.
I don't think you've ever had a supervisor at one before, but it would be kind of fun.
Yeah, well, I'm sure, yeah, any of the new supervisors could learn quite a bit from, from your retreat. We try to target the materials to the commissioners based on, you know, the experience the commissioners already have. So we have been meeting with the new supervisors. Mostly, our director, Jay Christelman, has been meeting with the new supervisors, giving them orientation to, to what our department does. So that's always, that's always a challenge with new supervisors, and they are really drinking from a fire hose, especially at this point in time with the COVID situation. But trying to get them up to speed as to, as to what our department does and how our, our processes work, particularly the public hearing processes for the items that come to them. Okay, well, Chair Walters, I see we've got about seven minutes till it's time for your public hearing. So that's all I've got from your agenda for the study session. Do you have anything, or do the other commissioners have anything for staff?
We don't have anything right off, because any of the other commissioners have anything?
Okay, well, Chair Walters, looks like this gives us a little pause, at least a couple of minutes. So we'll anticipate in about five minutes here, when it hits five thirty, that we can, that we can open the public hearing.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to do cancel it.
Mr. McNeely, I'm seeing five thirty.
So Chairman Walters, this is Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff. Yep, I see that it's five thirty as well. Wanted to let you know, as you, as you initiate the public hearing, that staff is here to assist members of the public. We have the chat function to where if any members of the public send a chat, it's just going to go to staff. It doesn't go to the rest of the public. It doesn't go to the rest, to the commissioners. And so the chat function can be used by members of the public to have staff assist them with raising a hand, sharing a screen, anything technical having to do with the meeting. So with that, Chair Walters, please proceed with the agenda. Thank you.
You're welcome, everybody. Here's the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the February meeting of the Cookney County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in order that they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I'll make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion then will take place amongst commissioners. No additional public comments may be made unless requested by a commissioner. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plan approval are reported or referred to the board of supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the board of supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have fifteen days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Department for, for the, to Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. Also, do not use the comment function for discussions. It's for communicating with staff only if you have a problem. Thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county's planning. So I'd like to start this off with a pledge of allegiance, and I'd like Jess McNeely to lead us in that, please.
Thank you, Chair Walters. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chair Walters.
Thank you, sir. I have number two approval of minutes. We have two minutes to have approved. I'm looking for a motion.
Commissioner Walters, before you ask for a motion, I would like to separate the two, because I have a correction. I'd like to get in the January twenty seventh minutes.
Great. So let's, let's get a, a motion for the first minutes, January sixth.
Okay, I'll go ahead and do that one. I move to approve the January sixth, twenty twenty-one minutes for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a, a first by Commissioner Best and a second by Commissioner Clifford. So I'll go through the roll call, starting
This general area was, was an unsubdivided lands area in which all of the properties start out, started out as a room for 40 acres. The proposed use here is a campground, hence a campground conditional use permit application. This is a vicinity map showing where the site is. You see that it is east of US 64 and north of the US 64 180 intersection in the valley area. This 40 acres is at the far north end of the area known as Woodland Ranches, and it borders state trust land. And you see Woodland Ranch Road, which is, let's see, about three sections further, or three 40 acre parcels further south than this property. And it is accessed from Pleasant View Road. And you see Woodland Ranch Road labeled as such on the screen. This is a site plan submitted by the applicant. You can see there are 48 proposed tents grouped into four separate areas. And you see on the west side of their property where they're accessing Pleasant View Drive. They have a parking area, and they have a reception area and a centralized outdoor eating area. This is a photograph of the site. You can see the posting sign on the foreground. And you can see the size of the junipers in the general area, size of these junipers, and, and the density of the junipers are growing in this area would certainly keep the tents of this clamping project well screened from surrounding properties. This is a view of Pleasant View Drive, just south of the site. It is a private easement, minimally improved. And as we'll discuss in the staff report, improvement of Pleasant View Drive to meet county, county standards for emergency services will certainly be a part of the project moving forward. The proposed development, as you saw in your packet, is 48 campsites, 48 tents. These are where commonly referred to as glamping tents. The images provided by the applicant are an off-white or kind of beige canvas tent. They are proposing modular tray, trailer mounted bathroom facilities. So these would not have, require site-built bathroom facilities, but rather be in a modular trailer that can be wheeled onto the site, self-contained, and then moved off the site if and when the clamping project no longer operates. There is a proposed lobby tent and an outdoor dining area. There's proposed staff maintained and monitored fire pits. That was very clear in the applicant's materials, that the fire pits would only be turned on and off by staff and maintained by staff. All of the internal driveways and parking areas are proposed to be compacted aggregate. The water and wastewater both would be tanked and hauled to and from the site. So it would not include permanent infrastructure on the site for either water or wastewater. There's no APS power to the site. This is a true off-grid site. So the applicant has proposed using small generators when where necessary, although individual tents will not have power. They will only have a few solar lights available to them. All proposed lighting is solar LED. Of course, this would require a lighting permit. And we've conditioned as such in our proposed conditions. With the citizen participation plan, the applicant held a couple of virtual meetings, and they also had contact from surrounding property owners by phone. There was concern expressed with road improvement, noise regulation, open fire regulation, and the seasonal operating dates. We did get three emails today. They have been forwarded to you, some of them actually during your, during your study session today. The emails that were sent today were in opposition, concerned with traffic, concerned with activity and noise. So the findings for a, this is incorrectly labeled, but a conditional use permit that you are familiar with, not a zone change, are the four that are on the screen in front of you. That the conditional use is in accord with the objectives of the ordinance and the purpose of the zone in which the site is located. Second one, that the proposed location of the conditional use and its conditions under which it would be operated will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or material injurious to surrounding properties. The third one, that the proposed conditional use will comply with the applicable provisions of the ordinance, except for where you provide for waivers. And the fourth one, that the proposed conditional use is consistent with and conforms to the goals, objectives, and policies of the county's comprehensive plan. As we've noted, this site is located off of a, is not located on a county maintained road. It's located off of a private easement that is privately maintained. We did build into the zoning ordinance with campground section that if a, that if a campground is not located on a county maintained road, this waiver, as discussed on your screen, is required. And the findings for the waiver are that the, the granting of it would not diminish the ability for emergency service providers to access the property. That the waiver would not put an undue maintenance burden or impact on other legal users of, of the road. That the granting of the waiver is consistent with all of the county's engineering standards set by public works or our division, our department. And that granting of the waiver will not have a negative impact on neighboring properties. And the conditions that we proposed would, would utilize the engineering permitting process to ensure those things. So the proposed conditions on this site are summarized here in these bullets. That the, if approved, if the Planning and Zoning Commission can make the findings, that the conditions would include the site has to be developed in conformance with the submitted site plan and narrative. That there will be fire district coverage and plan approval by an approved fire and emergency services organization. That building permits would be as required. Understanding, our understanding for this project is there would be some building permits for some of the infrastructure and potentially the platforms that the clamping tents would be placed on. That permitted road improvements on Pleasant View and Woodland, Woodland Ranch would be to the county standard. And we can use, we can use our engineering division and permitting process to manage that. Does require health district permitting for a campground in which the health district confirms that meets the health district requirements for sanitation facilities. Require all wildlife friends and fencing, if any fencing is utilized. That driveways would also meet the county standard for emergency services. That lighting would only be fully shielded, narrow spectrum amber LED lighting. That the landscaping with existing trees and shrubs would be maintained adequately with screen in sight, and it would also be maintained free of noxious and invasive plants. That all guests would be provided with a leave no trace educational materials. And that the applicant prohibit direct access from the site to adjacent private or state lands. And the conditional use permit would have a five-year expiration, expiring February 24th, 26. So with that, I would point out that staff did do some analysis and staff report. I can certainly answer questions about that. Staff would recommend the conditions discussed and in the staff report, if the commission can make the findings to approve. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Jess, I have a question for you relating to the one I asked earlier. Was, was there any discussion about 24/7 staff, staffing of the site during their operational season?
So Chair Walters, Commissioner Ruggles, the applicant's submittals discuss having staff on site at all times to include that staff is, only staff is allowed to manage the fire pits. So our, our understanding was that was a proposal embedded in the stat, in the applicant's narrative from the start. Does that answer your question?
Well, sort of, but it's, the reason I asked is I didn't see anything about that in the conditions for the CUP.
Sure. Okay, yeah, I could certainly see Chair Walters, Commissioner Ruggles, where that could be, that could be a good recommended condition addition.
Yeah, and the other thing, what we have done before with noise limitation, another similar campsite or campground in the valley area was to establish a standard. Was that discussed with them at all during the pre-app and the lead up to this?
So Chair Walters and Commissioner Ruggles, the, a couple of things. The applicant's narrative and, and proposal included quiet hours. Didn't specifically mention like a decibel limitation, but did include that there would be no, no projected sound, no speaker sound. The only thing they would allow would be like an acoustic guitar at one of the campsites. So the applicant certainly addressed it in their kind of neighborhood mitigation portion of their submittals. Likewise, this is a, this is a 43 acre site, so this one is a, is a good size for maintaining good separation from surrounding property owners. And none of the budding properties, there's one budding property to the south, one to the east are developed at this point in time. At the property to the north is state land, and then to the, to the west is not developed either, but it's on the other side of Pleasant View Drive. So to make it short, staff wasn't seeing noise considerations as, as pertinent in this case. This certainly, I think a noise condition certainly can be a good addition.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Jess. For the, the road maintenance, is there anything in the county standards that it would need to be brought up to that relates to dust? Like is, are they, would they be required to have, lay anything down to minimize dust, or is there just inherently less dust if it's made in county standards?
So Chair Walters and Commissioner Williams, yeah, good question. The, the county standard requirement is that it's an all-weather improved travel surface 20 feet wide, capable of supporting a 42,000 pound emergency vehicle. That's, that's the base standard. The, that can be achieved different ways. The most common way is with compacted AV. Compacted AV is better for mitigating dust problems than just dirt. Certainly, and would certainly be an improvement over what's on the site now. I think if, if dust were a concern in the needed area, we, we would probably recommend a condition that the applicant have a, have a dust mitigation plan in addition to that. So yeah, the, the county standard is really focused on emergency service access and, and where the road, and then maintenance of that as well. That there's a plan going into the future that is maintained. And, and where dust is typically improved when, when you go to that compacted AV all-weather surface. It's still not a, as good as a pavement, that's for sure.
All right, so if, you know, coming in off 64, I think they do go by some properties that are developed. So that, you know, that might be something that could be addressed through that stretch as far as dust goes.
Absolutely. And, and on that, Commissioner Williams, one of the things I would point out is that Woodland Ranch Road, which I'm pointing to with my, with my cursor right now, is, is pretty well improved. It is also a private easement road, but was well-built initially as, as essentially the collector for this area. And it does pass, it does pass and develop properties. The MHP that you see here, I've got the zoning layer on, on this image you're looking at in front of you, is manufactured home park. That's manufactured home park zoning. So that property is probably the highest concentration of, of dwellings in the area. And, and the rest of the area is, is pretty scattered. Obviously, nothing's less than 10 acres. As you can see from this image, the vast majority of properties are actually 40 acres. So not, you know, not a lot of development. However, we're certainly seeing more interest in this area all the time. And we would anticipate that there would be more development, more residential development, which is permitted by the G-zone in the future.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, this Commissioner Best, I've got a couple of questions. You know, the, the biggest one, I mean, just out of the gate, is that I don't think I've ever seen anything less developed than this as far as infrastructure. It, my impression is that everything's going to be in tanks above ground and trucked in and trucked out, and no power unless a generator's running. Are you comfortable, and has, has staff reviewed this to the extent that they're, they're comfortable?
The most common way is with compacted A B. Compacted A B is better for. For mitigating dust problems than just dirt, certainly, and would certainly be an improvement over what's on the site now. Think if, if dust were a concern in the needed area, we, we would probably recommend a condition. That the applicant have a, have a dust mitigation plan in addition to that. So yeah, the, the county standard is really focused on emergency service access and, and where the road and the maintenance of that as well. That there's a plan going into the future that is maintained. And, and where dust is typically improved. When, when you go to that compacted A B all weather surface, it's still not a, is good as a pavement, that's for sure.
All right, so if, you know, coming in off sixty four, I think they do go by some properties that are developed. So that, you know, that might be something that could be addressed through that stretch. As far as dust goes.
Absolutely, and, and on that, Commissioner Williams, one of the things I would point out. Is that Woodland Ranch Road, which I'm pointing to with my, with my cursor right now, is, is pretty well improved. It is also a private easement road, but was well built initially as, as essentially the collector for this area. And it does pass, it does pass and develop properties. The MHP that you see here, I've got the zoning layer on, on this image you're looking at in front of you. Is manufactured home park, that's manufactured home park zoning. So that property is probably the highest concentration of. Of dwellings in the area. And, and the rest of the area is, is pretty scattered. Obviously, nothing's less than ten acres. As you can see from this image, the vast majority of properties are actually forty acres. So not, you know, not a lot of development, however, we're certainly seeing more interest in this area all the time. We would anticipate that there would be more development, more residential development, which is permitted by the G-zone in the future.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, this Commissioner Best, I've got a couple of questions. You know, the, the biggest one, I mean, just out of the gate is that. I don't think I've ever seen anything less developed than this as far as infrastructure. It, it, my impression is that everything's going to be in tanks above ground and trucked in and trucked out and. No power unless a generator is running. Are you comfortable and has, has staff reviewed this? To the extent that they're, they're comfortable with this kind of infrastructure because it's, it's a little different.
So Chair Walters and Commissioner Best, we have, we'll, we'll point out a couple of things. For those of you who helped in drafting the update to the zoning ordinance that included this campground section. Part of the intent with doing, allowing a campground with conditional use permit in the G-zone. Was that it was a low infrastructure, low footprint, so to speak, development. That the campsites are temporary, i.e. tents or yurt type, type campsites. That, that the entire development, first off, is not very visible. It's by design a very low density, maximum number of campsites is two per acre. In this, in this case, they're going much less than that, they're just barely going over one per acre on the entire site. So the intent of being something with a low development footprint that could be picked up. And, and removed from the site over time with leaving, leaving no impact. Was certainly part of the, part of the design. We have seen a successful development at the under canvas campground. That does use, completely use tanked. Obviously, hall water is, is the norm in this area for bringing your fresh potable water in. But we've also seen where the wastewater is tanked to be hauled off. I would point out, many of us who live in the area are familiar with the Nordic Center. Which is run by Babbitt Ranches, but on Forest Service land, north on one eighty, just north of the. Of Snowball ski area, the Nordic Center uses some of these modular bathroom trailers where everything's on board. With the modular bathroom trailer and using pretty successfully. So we, we see this as being positive in that it keeps the density low. On, on site on what can be supported by all of these removable forms of infrastructure. And that if and when the conditional use permit goes away, the underlying, underlying G-zone does not change. That the property can still function as it's permitted in the G-zone without having, without having put in. You know, big water or wastewater or power infrastructure. So does that answer your question Supervisor Best? Commissioner Best?
Supervisor. I get a paycheck with that one. Thank you. I think in general it does, I mean, it's. I, I guess you can look at it both ways. If these guys don't make it, they can pick up everything and disappear and the land will be unchanged. It is a little unusual from what we normally see. Do you have? The, the use of generators, do you have noise standards for generators that, that we could apply to this in a condition?
So. Chair Walters and Commissioner Best, similar to what, what Commissioner Ruggles brought up a little while ago. They, they did put in their narrative that generators would be used sparingly, they didn't, they didn't specify a model. Most newer models of generators are much more quiet than, than some of the older ones that we might be familiar with. Likewise, we would certainly see this as being, as the applicants. Working with their own, their own property management and marketing, so to speak. And I'm sure it's, it's in their own interest that they don't have loud generators. And when you look at the, at the site plan and just the, the site in general. You, you note that they are a good distance from any property lines or any. And certainly any developed property near them. However, knowing that they will rely on generators, I, I think having a. Having a noise condition would, could be a very good idea. The norm that we have gone with is that noise generated by the use does not exceed fifty dB at the property line. And that seems to have worked in the case of some cell tower infrastructure and it's worked with some other cases as well. So does that answer your question, Commissioner Best?
Yeah, and the, another question is about road use and I brought this up earlier in the. In the work session, all of these roads are on private property. We do have some. Opposition from, I think, owners of some of those roads. We could put in a dust mitigation. Condition, but is there any precedent or legal basis for a. A person saying that this is a commercial use of a. Of an easement across their property that they had assumed was. Was not commercial. Can, can you address these complaints that I think we just got within some of them within the last few hours?
Sure. So Chair Walters and Commissioner Best. One, one of the, one of the principles that we operate from within the department. Under our, our zoning ordinance, our building code and, and state statute is that when an applicant. Goes to pull any kind of permit on property in the county through our department. They are required to demonstrate that they have legal and physical access to their property. So we put that burden on the applicant. If in fact, there's something written into an easement in this area. That, that the easement could not be used for commercial. For commercial use, then, then for starters, that would be on the, on the burden of the applicant to disclose that and they would be. Providing false information to us that they have legal and physical access for the, for the intended use. Likewise, as a private easement, any surrounding property owners who saw that a, the easement. The conditions of easement or the, the written. Regulations that went with an easement were being violated, that's certainly a, a private legal matter between property owners and, and those of us. Who, who work just even with home development in Coquigny Noe County know that becomes a, a regular, that's a regular occurrence. For property owners to, to use legal systems to work, yeah, to work out easements. So does that, does that answer your question, Commissioner Best, or are there any other ones I can answer for you?
Well, it sounds like it leaves it up to the commission, basically. Is that true that it, there's no legal precedent for a homeowner to say. That this is an inappropriate use legally of. Of the easement across my property, is that true? Maybe we should ask counsel, I don't know.
Sure.
Mr. Lumpkin, are you there?
Hi, sorry. My, my new question, did you ask the question again?
Yes, Commissioner Best had a question. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Lumpkin. So, Mr. Lumpkin, we, we've had some complaints from, I believe there are Jason landowners. Anyway, a landowners in the area who have. Easements that allow access to this property across their land. And the question is whether they have any legal basis in saying that. Whereas there is an easement across my property, it, it, I did not anticipate that it would be used commercially. And therefore I would rather not see this commercial development going in, is there? So that, that could be a commission and ultimately possibly a supervisor's decision, but is there a legal question here? Is, is a, an easement across private property open to any use?
Well, it's gonna really depend on the language of the easement that was granted because. An easement could be constructed in such a way as to prohibit certain kinds of ingress and egress and so if. How, any, any sort of additional information on that? To kind of flesh out the picture, I'd hesitant, be hesitant to give an opinion, but ultimately it would be a. Yeah, it would be an issue between the surrounding landowners and the, the dominant tenant, which would be the, the property that the easement serve. But really it would have, it would depend on the language of the easement.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
And I, I guess I would ask staff, I assume that you have not read those easements since this issue isn't addressed in the report.
So Chair Walters and Commissioner Best, that is, that is a norm for our department, as I mentioned. When, if, if an applicant were asking for a, just for a building permit by right for a home on this property. We put the burden on the applicant to demonstrate that they have legal and physical access and they, they essentially. Affirm that when they, when they apply for any permits. So yeah, staff does not. Does not physically check easements ourselves to confirm. First off, that there is legal access or, or that the legal access would be limited in any way. And, and as much as, as much as I can certainly understand that concern. And, and we really, you know, it's, it's not that, that we're trying to put off any responsibilities, just that staff really can't assume that responsibility. And probably the volume, especially at the building permit level, is, is just not tenable.
I think you'd have to have legal expertise too, which you don't have. Okay, well, that, that's a question to throw down then and I, I think I can leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll close it, open it up for the applicant, because the applicant, for the applicant's representative here, would you like to address the commission?
Hi there, yes, both Andrew and Kylie are here. Appreciate obviously the opportunity to speak with everybody and, and through the review of the county. No, no further questions from my side, I think. The, the items that were flagged with respect to dust and noise, we'll make sure to have the clarity around those points, but. You know, obviously, we want to make sure that this is low impact, low noise, low burden on the land and also community, so that will be the, the goal and the focus, but. Any other questions, I guess I would open up, otherwise I'll overturn this time back to the town.
Mr. Chin, would you give us your, your name and address to start out on here?
Oh, yeah, certainly. So first name is Andrew, last name is Chen. Mailing address is two two oh four Crestview Drive, Lehigh, Utah, eight four zero four three.
Can I ask you if you've read the staff report and if you agree with it?
I have read the staff reports, gone through a couple of the items, I think there are a couple of things that I just have some questions on. Or a couple of points that we would clarify, you know, that the, for example, the generator component. Would only be used as necessary, wouldn't be kind of continual use basis. So there's a couple of those small points that I think. That will provide some additional clarity on, but on the whole, I, I didn't see anything that stood out as a, as a red flag plus on our side.
If you have something you need to get clarified, let's do it right now.
Okay, let me go ahead, would you actually, for simplicity purpose, would you actually go to the. Report with the list of the page or the slide that had the list of conditions? This will be the easiest reference there when you're sharing your screen before.
So Chair Walters, I, I can do that, I'll, I'll share my screen again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, okay, perfect. Nothing wrong with the first few, as I mentioned before. Wildlife friendly fencing, the plan isn't to do any fencing at the time, at the current time. Everything else here looks good and the only, I think the only other comment would be the, the generator component. I wanted to understand a little bit more about the lighting permit, just to understand. Contextually what would be involved with the lighting permit component. The LED lights would only be pathway lights and only during evening as they solar powered. So I just want to make sure I understood that component, but the rest of it, I think we're good from our side.
Staff, can you answer his question?
Sure, Chair Walters, so to the applicant, all outdoor lighting. In Coquigno County requires a lighting permit. Our zoning ordinance, which is available online, lays out the requirements for lighting permits. We are just trying to narrow in with our proposed condition that within that lighting permit that will have a. Gosh, a, a limit on your, on your lighting as, as calculated typically in lumens. That we would be specifying that all outdoor lighting would be fully shielded. That it's narrow spectrum amber LED lighting, and I believe your proposal indicated that you were intending to use solar. LED lighting.
That's correct, okay, perfect. Thank you for, for that additional clarity, that's helpful there. And I believe, uh, the only, I guess the last item to mention from our side is. In the submitting to the proposal to the county, I think we did also include. The evidence or the legal documentation with respect to the easements, which does not have any additional restrictions on it. But other than that, those are the only other points for clarity. Other than that, I think we are good. From what's been covered to.
Okay, any other questions of, of the applicant?
Um, I've got one, this is Commissioner Williams from Mr. Chen. I'm just curious, who, who do you envision your main customer base being and are they? Do you anticipate that they will be staying there as a, a jumping off point to go see Grand Canyon? So they'll be coming and going. Or they'll stay on site for a number of days? Or do you have any sense of sort of the, the comings and goings? I know Grand Canyon is obviously, a lot of people that stay there, that's where they're going to be heading, but I was just wondering, curious.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a great question. I imagine it'd probably be a mix. Obviously, the area is, is within close proximity and so I imagine that there are a few folks who'd be going to visit the Grand Canyon just up north. With respect to the second question, which was sort of like timeline. Again, I think it, you know, it probably vary depending, some folks will probably be coming. And staying for a couple of days at a time, some might be shorter, some might be a little bit longer. So I, I'd anticipate there might be some fluctuation, but, but you're, you're precisely right. That's probably the audience that would be most feel to visiting the location and going to the area. Oh, my wife has a comment.
This is Kylie joining us well. We have done campsites like this in other areas and we typically see. That most people come and stay for one night at it, as it is more of a rustic camping, glamping experience. They really just want to have the experience underneath the dark sky and use it as a launching point to see. Nearby things such as the Grand Canyon, you know, when have a supply opened and even continue on to Lake Powell or Sedona, so. Yeah, we expect it to be very similar to what we've seen in the past, but obviously in, in this area.
All right, thank you. And then I just have one other question. I think one of the conditions was. That the guests can't go on to adjacent private property or state land, and I know there's not going to be any fencing. How are they going to know where the state land starts? Or, I mean, do you have a plan for letting them know sort of how far they can wander off?
Yeah, great, great question. And, and I guess no, no pun intended with the, the name of the camp and wandering around, but. So there, there is a fence on the northern boundary on, on the state land side. So not a fence that we didn't put it, input there. There also is a, a pretty clear road that kind of indicates sort of the boundary and so. You know, if, if you walk the actual land itself, you'll note that as you go further in. You know, obviously you're walking between brush and trees and other things, we don't anticipate folks to wander off the path and it's also something that. In the second to last bullet with the leave no trace materials, one of the things that we're going to highlight is just. You know, please don't wander off sort of what's already been refined for the, the camp experience. Just because that does impact the land, even if it is as simple as walking, you know, across the dirt or across the vegetation. That's something that we don't want to encourage folks to do when they stay, just because. Again, we, we don't want them to be impacting or damaging the land and, and even something as simple as a walk can, can do that, so. So the fence to the north will provide the boundary for state land. As for our, our parcel and our, our property piece there. You know, we'll, we'll be sure to outline those within the materials for the guests.
Okay, that, that's, those are great answers. I like the, the, you know, sort of having some internal trails, because you get out there in those junipers and, you know, if there's no sort of path to follow, people are gonna get turned around and lost amongst those trees, for sure, so that's good, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I, I've got one thing I'd like to add, Mr. Chen mentioned the condition for lighting. One thing I would like to say about that to him is that depending on how this goes with the commission discussion, it is my intention to suggest wording to the conditions dealing with lighting that would add a little bit of flexibility to the requirements, because I have looked, well, taken a look at the market for solar lighting and inventoried some of what's out there. And I think it may be appropriate to add a little bit of flexibility, not a lot, but enough to make it more workable for the applicant in this case. Just want you to know that ahead of time.
Thank you, no, appreciate that, I believe, I believe it was John, thank you for that, John, that's, that's a good comment.
I have a question regarding, this is Commissioner Burton. I have a question regarding the, the portable bathroom setup. So you indicate that everything's solar LED. Does that mean that the bathrooms will have solar lighting all night long? I just want to make sure that we're not constantly running generators, because sound does carry, especially at night.
Yeah, absolutely, no, and, and great question. So, so no, so, so no, no generator is used to power the restroom facility. It's, it's a fairly rustic one, I think the photo might be included also in the application itself. But it, it basically operates off solar and then feeds into the rest of the system. So it's solar into the solar battery storage, and then that solar powered battery is what then powers the rest of the system. So, so no generator or noise beside, you know, obviously, you know, when that, when that activates and water goes through or something like that, so.
Okay, so completely.
No generator there.
It's a completely self-contained unit, that, that's correct, yeah, all right.
Commissioner Walters, I have a question for the applicant.
Go ahead, please.
This is Commissioner Clifford. You're proposing for 1,000 gallon water tanks and pump to the restroom, bathroom units. So you're saying that there's an internal, so, or battery powered pump that's going to pull the water out of those tanks? Are those tanks going to be positioned next to the restrooms?
They will be, yeah, and they will, it'll kind of leverage two systems. So one is sort of the gravity feed, so obviously the, we won't be piping like from the top of the tank, we'll be from the base of the tank, so we'll have sort of a natural flow of gravity. So that will create sort of the minimal amount of leverage or, or power requirement from, you know, from that, from that battery to send water through. So it'll kind of be two systems, gravity to one extent, and then the battery for just the, I guess the last leg of, of the system.
Okay, to provide the pressure for the showers and the flushing of the toilets.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, where is the wastewater going to be contained in the units and then pumped into a trailer? How is the wastewater stored on the property?
Yeah, great question, so it'll be pumped into the trailer itself, and then obviously that only has a finite capacity, and so then from there, we also have attachment tanks which help to increase the capacity. I think the technical term is, is a, is like a pillow tank, but, but there's, so there's two tank system that kind of helps to contain any of that wastewater.
Okay, and in the off season, are these tanks going to stay on site or will they be removed?
They would be removed offsite, or offseason, sorry.
Okay, all right, that's all the questions I have.
Any further questions for the applicant?
Uh, this is Tom Lamonteng. I just joined the meeting, I thought, I'm in California.
This is Commissioner Dolan, are you, are you with this team?
Uh, no, I'm a land owner on Woodland Ranch Road.
Okay, I'll get to you in a little bit.
All right, thank you.
Please mute, thank you. Okay, seeing none, no other applicant's comments on here? I'm going to open it to the public level, so now iPad Tom, you're up.
Yes, I've got some concerns about the fire in the area. And.
Please identify yourself and your address, sir.
My name is Tom Lamonteng, I own properties, thirty one twenty seven East Woodland Ranch Road.
Mr. McNeely, would you pull up the map?
And my concerns are, I have, I have a few of those, I sent an email, a couple of emails to this, this afternoon with my concerns.
Where are you located? I'm sorry, where are you located?
Thirty one twenty seven East Woodland Ranch Road, that's my property. If you go back, right, right, right there.
Are you that square right there?
I'm that square right there.
Super, thank you.
I have, we're planning on building a house there, we're, we bought the property a few years ago. I'm concerned about the fire hazard that, that this can cause, and if they have enough storage water on the property, if something happens, what type of liability insurance are they going to be carrying if, if in case there's a fire that starts with one of their campsites? Also, are they going to help with the infrastructure for the roads there, because the added traffic going up and down the roads that are that well maintained, it's, most of them are maintained by the people who live in the area. So with emergency equipment, you get in and out of it. And also with the, the added noise that, that could come into the area with the extra people, are they going to be because they're surrounded by private property except on the north side, which is the National Forest? Will they be putting a fencing around everything, that, and putting signs up to let people know that there's a lot of private property around them? Because I got people running across my property right now. The, the, these are some of my concerns, because I'm just really also concerned about the changing of the zoning in the area to include camp, camping, commercial camping. Because it was, start opening up more and more commercial camping somewhere, this is relatively residential area. I know it, it can be zoned for other uses by this process, what's going on now.
Okay, noted. Just McNeely, would you answer his, his questions for him, please, sir?
So Chair Walters, sure, I, I believe the, the fire concern, under our zoning ordinance, there's a required fire emergency services provision that, that there has to be fire and emergency services either in a district or subscribing or otherwise signed off by a fire and emergency services provider that the plan and the maintenance and, and that there is a response in place meets their requirements. In this area, this has typically been, gosh, it's the one down in Red Lake, the, the name escapes me right now. We also have the city of Tucson in this area, so this is, this is a common thing that, that proposed developments in this area are looking to, which is their best option for, for fire coverage. When it comes to the road maintenance, the, the road maintenance will be on the applicant to demonstrate that the, that the road access to the site meets county standards. We discussed that standard earlier and is maintained as such. So it has to be maintained to the point that the, that that standard does not become degraded. And we do that through our, through our engineering permitting process. On noise, we have, we certainly have what the applicant has provided. On trespassing concerns, we understand that, that's, that's obviously a law enforcement issue that regardless of what the use of any of this land is out here, trespassing is, is, is always prohibited. Were there any other questions in there that, that, that I haven't covered?
Oh, what type of liability will they have in case a fire does start from their property?
So Chair Walters, what, what I can point out is, is that they do have a requirement to have what amounts to a fire wise plan with whoever their approved fire and emergency services provider is. And then, and then they have to have a, a provider that would respond. And typically, that's going to include yeah, infrastructure on the site, as, as far as liability, that's, that's a, that is not something regulated by the zoning ordinance, nor can it be regulated by the zoning ordinance. So that's, that's really just on the, on the risk of, of the developer. And it actually sounds like a pretty big question for the developer to me. So Chair Walters, anything else I can clarify for you in that?
No, sir, sure appreciate you answering that. So let me just make a clarification here to everybody. It is open to the public, there's a raise your hand button down here. I would like for you to mute your speakers and raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and I'll, I'll go through and address. Okay, so I'm looking for the next public comment. Tom, could you please, there you go, thank you. Eric Barella and Aaron Barella, you're both, your speakers are open, if you'd close those please, and Marjorie Berry. And then if there's anybody that wants to talk, I don't see any hands here, am I missing something?
Oh, yes, sir, I cannot find the raise the hand emoji.
Okay, understood, so this is Mr. Skippy? Could you please identify?
My name is William Goodman. Yes, sir, my name is William Goodman, I reside at four eight five zero North Pleasant View Drive. That is the southwest corner of Woodman Ranch and Pleasant View. I have a few concerns. There's, one of them is signage. Will there be signage placed at that corner, that junction to direct people to the campsite? Therefore, being right in my view, the other one is being where I'm located, when people leave that, that, that place at night, their lights would shine right into my front window as they exit out towards Highway sixty four. There's also two natural waterways that pass Woodland Ranch that come onto my property. I've used my GI Bill to study regenerative agriculture. I was going to, you know, utilize that water to grow some crops on my land where the road improvement impede that waterway. And also with the increased activity and people there, with the, the vermin, rats and coyotes, the population will increase. If that does happen, how will they mitigate? If they use poison, can we, will there be a control against poison? Which will then get into the natural wildlife, the, the hawks and the other predators in the area? And of course, the one that everybody is saying, the noise complaints. We moved out here for the solitude and quietness of the high desert of Arizona. We didn't expect, this is eight months ago, we just purchased our property after, you know, being in the military for sixteen years, we came home to Arizona. And we wanted the high desert quiet and solitude, not a forty campsite, you know, commercial endeavor, less than a mile down the road. That would be my concerns, thank you.
First off, thank you for your service, appreciate that. In the conditions that are written for this project, there's twelve different recommended conditions of approval in here. They, they have to bring the road up to a, to a county maintained standard. I do not see that impact and outside of the, of the roadway there. And on your, I don't know exactly what your drainages are, but I, I don't see that necessarily causing any further impact. Is, as far as the, the development itself, if, if you've noticed in the Woodlands Ranches there, there's a lot of lots in there. And although it's barely, very sparse now, you can be guaranteed that they'll continue to buy lots and build out there. So there, there will become a, a time when you have a lot more neighbors than what you'd like.
I understand, I understand, I understand that, sir, I just, the concern is with the potential of having forty to, with forty vehicles at one vehicle per campsite, turning on and off my corner per day during the busy season is not the same as having three more houses go up on property around the, down the corner, is my concern.
And, and, and I can understand your concern. I saw on air earlier, there's a trailer park designation here. I think that's pretty close to your place as well. And, and there'll be a, a great number of people coming in and out of there at all times.
That, that is to, that is to the west of us, sir, and that was a concern when we moved in, and those, those residents do not come to our area. They stop west of us. I, I understand what you're saying, sir, it's just when, when they are turning directly facing my house at night, out here in the desert, they're going to have their high beams on. If that happens frequently at night, it goes right into my front window. Whereas, whereas the motorhome park is on the Woodland Ranch, and it's completely contained and with behind a high wall, and there's no other, you know, concern there.
I sympathize with your concerns on that, and, and I don't know that there's any way that we could regulate something like that. I'm going to refer back to staff, Jeff McNeely, do you have any comments here that I've missed? Or to add to?
Sir, so Chair Walters, yeah, I absolutely certainly understand the concern. The, the applicant will be required, hearing permit to dem, to demonstrate what the traffic counts will be. We know this is a proposed to be a forty eight camp, forty eight ten campsite. So we all have a good idea that those people will be, when they're maxed out, will be coming and going on a daily basis, most, most of them to the Grand Canyon. One thing that we point out with this property is, in, in the entire area, is the vast majority of these properties are forty acre parcels. So on those forty acre parcels, particularly with the mature juniper growth in the area, we would certainly see that, that, that just natural screening on the site and natural site selections, both for the applicant and for any of the surrounding property owners, does, does help quite a bit with, with natural screening from both headlights in the road and from, from developments on the property. So any, anything?
Yes, actually, I, I understand that it's screened from my property to the site. The concern is the, where my house is located on the southwest corner, as they leave the property at night, they have to turn and their headlights will shine onto my property. You know, and like I said, they'll be using high beams. There's no tree coverage in between my house, and I can look out my front window right now and see the intersection. Where if, are, are they going to put signage there, that was one of my concerns also, to direct people there on the easements? Are they going to put signage there, which then I have to look at out my front window? It's just all about, it's all about the, the peace and quiet that I've, I've, I saw it out here being disturbed by advertisements and constant traffic that would shine onto my house. I, I mean, that, that's my big concern, is just trying to live in solitude with the constant traffic, the increased traffic and the advertising.
Understood, thank you for your, your comments. I'd like for you to try to work with the applicants here to minimize the impact to your property. I would like to think that, that they're not going to be leaving the camp at night very much. They're going to go in and, and be set up at night, so I don't know if that helps at all, but that's, that's what I'm thinking, thank you for your comments and thank you for your service. So I'm going to go on, I see some hands up here, LR. That's, that's what I'm thinking. Thank you for your comments and thank you for your service. So I'm gonna go on. I see some hands up here. LR, please. Introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Lacy Ravencraft. Can you hear me? My name is Lacy Ravencraft.
Your speaker moving up and down, but I can't hear you.
Hey, we're hearing you, Don. I'm hearing you.
I can hear.
A little technical difficulty here.
Hello?
LR, while you try to work on that, I'm, I'm gonna go to the next one. That'd be Eric Barella. Please introduce yourselves, give us your address.
Hello, all. This is Eric Barella and my property is at twelve six three. It's. South Rim Ranch.
It looks like we have a problem.
Can you hear me?
Got a second one that we can't hear.
Hey, Don, we're, we're hearing him.
Hello.
Mr. Barella?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can you hear us?
Mr. Barella, please hang on for a second. This is Commissioner Clifford.
Marty, do you know if there's something you can do?
Don, can you hear me? This is Commissioner Clifford.
I don't think he can hear any of us. I think somebody needs to text him.
Can you text him, uh, Jess and let him know that he's having problems with this?
Mute, I'm gonna go to the next one. We'll come back to you.
Okay.
Laura Sickles Steel.
Hey, Don, are you, this is Jess, Don. Are you hearing me?
Please introduce us, introduce yourself to us and give us your.
Hi, my name is, my name is Laura Sickles Steel.
Jess, Don can't hear any of us, so I think you're gonna need to text him and let him know.
I'm texting him right now.
Jess McNeely?
Maybe one of the committee members can turn on their camera and show them that they can't hear him.
Jess, what happened? Is it me?
It might be a good idea if someone writes on a sign real quick and holds it up and say.
Hey folks, um, I just, uh, this is Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff and just called Don. And, um, he's trying to fix it on his end. Uh, he asked that we go ahead and move on with, um, with the public hearing. Um, hey, Zach, uh, you might be able to send that directly to chat possibly. Um, to, uh, to Don or you, or you can, you can put up on the screen again. Uh, but I'm seeing the next person, uh, that we were gonna ask for comment from would be LR. So LR, if you could please give us your name and address and please le- limit your comments, uh, to a couple of minutes.
Jess, this is Commissioner Best. Do we have a call?
So, uh.
It's your best on back.
Okay. Hey, uh, hey, uh, Chair Walters, um, I was just asking LR to speak, but I'll, I'll let you take over from there.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. LR, I guess I had the, the malfunction, not you. Please introduce yourself to us and give us your.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Lacy Ravencraft. I live at nine one six eight Red Beat Road in the adjacent community of South Rim Ranch. And I just had two questions. Uh, the first question had to do with, uh, how. Are they, how do they anticipate the frequency of filling those water tanks and emptying those septic systems that they talked about? Because one thousand gallons, e- even four thousand gallons for all four restrooms is not a lot. So I anticipate that. That the commercial driving of water tanks and or septic companies to move that in and out would be. Quite frequent and those vehicles are heavy and would probably add to some additional wear and tear. My second question has to do with the, um, the fire pit management. And I believe they said that they would have staff monitored, staff maintained slash monitored fire pits. And I was just wondering. If, um, someone could speak as to exactly what that means. Thank you.
And our, our condition number two in here, it, it, uh, is pretty specific about. What has to happen with all fire, the fire pits, design, placement, location, reserve water tanks for emergency use. Fire extinguisher locations. So I think they have it pretty well covered. As far as the trucks coming in and out. Um, that would depend on the, the amount of, of. People that are renting the tents there and, and, uh. I, I would expect that to go fairly slow to begin with and then maybe pick up. So I, I really don't. Know how much traffic you get out there on that road now, but, um, I, I do share your concerns. Jess McNeely, is there any comments you wanna make on this?
Uh, Chair Walters, no. I think, uh, yeah, I think the report, as you pointed out, covers it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go to the next one. Eric Barella.
Hey, Don, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Sorry about that before.
No problem at all. Hey, yeah, so my name is Eric Barella. Um, my property is at twelve six three South Rim Ranch Road. Um, I have about twenty acres out there, uh, looking to start development probably by the end of this year or next year. Um, I had a couple of questions regarding the campground. Um, the first one is regarding the herds. And if it would impact any of the, the wildlife around there as far as like antelope, elk, and the second one, uh, probably. Piggybacking off of, uh, Skip, uh, as far as the, uh, the light pollution, this, this is, is that gonna be an issue as far as. Our dark skies that we have out there, is that gonna pollute any of the, uh, you know, our, our visibility we have out there at nighttime?
So, um, to answer your, your questions, wildlife are always disturbed by people. And, and I, I, I think the more people, the more disturbance you're gonna have. I think that. There's subdivision tents that grow, you're gonna have the wildlife being pushed more out on the, the federal lands and state lands. Um, this, as far as the, the, um, the other questions that you have, I think everything is pretty well. Addressed in here. Have you been able to read the, the conditions that were presented earlier on this case?
No, I haven't had a chance to go through it. I actually jumped on kind of late, so I'm kind of going through everything right now.
Okay, so most of your questions have been answered without him and, uh. So I'm just in, in the sake of time and for everybody else's consideration, I'll, I'll have you circle back and look at those. Okay, do you have any, did I answer all your questions or you're good?
Yeah, no, that's good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. Laura Sickles Steel.
Hi, uh, my husband and I live at forty-nine thirty-seven South Rim Ranch Road. We're in the process of installing our home in the next couple of months. Um, we've owned property for approximately ten years out there. Um, our biggest concern that hasn't been addressed here is there's approximately. Two deputies assigned out there for about six hundred square miles. Um, nobody's spoken to, you know, additional enforcement. Um, increase in, in crime with, with, you know, um, adjacent properties, those kinds of things with additional. Um, just, that's a big concern. The second concern we have is you've addressed fire pits, but nobody's really addressed, um, just, just daily cooking fires. Just, you know, they're, they're in a, they're in a very rustic setting. They're gonna need to feed themselves. So, you know, I'm just concerned about the fire danger out there. Thank you.
Understood. Um, Justin Neely, would you answer that? I don't have anything here on, on cooking fires. And, uh, so please jump in.
So, uh, Chair Walters, um, there was nothing in the, uh, in the applicant's submittals about cooking fires. Um, they don't have a, um. Obviously, the applicants have gone to some length that they're, that, um, to demonstrate that. Their, uh, campers will not be in control of their own fire in the way of campfires. So, um. I, I think the understanding was that the campers would not have any open fires, period. Um, but certainly that might be a good question to take back to the, to the applicants on, on possibly how they would see that being managed.
Right, so anybody could have a propane stove, a, you know, a Coleman stove, you know. You wanna get up and make, make a cup of coffee in the morning. It's, I can't imagine that nobody's gonna ever have a fire on their own. Um, one, one last question, please. Um, what about mitigation of any ATVs, motorcycles, um, quads, those kinds of things? Will those be allowed in that area?
Okay, I, uh, again, I don't have any information on, on that in this packet. Um, I have noted your question and, and that the, uh, when we open this up as a commission, when we're talking to the applicant. We will ask these questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melinda Gantner.
Uh, yes, sir. My name is Melinda Gantner. My address is six six seven one Lasso Loop. I'm also with South Rim Ranch. Um, my concerns on this size of a campground, number one. Is the water uses in Valley. Valley only has two wells where everybody in that area. Has to get their water from. So when you're talking forty-eight campgrounds, two people. Average per campground, bathrooms and showers. That's a lot of water usage that's going to possibly run those wells dry. The traffic on the road, um. You, you had stated to the one gentleman that you didn't think that there would be a lot of traffic coming and going at night. But there will be because of the fact that if there is no dining facilities on that campground, people will have to eat. So they're gonna be coming and going.
Noted. I appreciate your questions. Um, the one thing that we cannot address is anything to do with water. That's by state statute, so we will not be talking about water. Um, we will talk some more about this when we get to the commission level on the. On the app, uh, everybody driving through on the road easements. Thank you. Any?
Thank you.
Any, uh, anybody else? Seeing that, I'm gonna close the, the public comment section and, and open it up to the commission level. I'm gonna, um, stick with going in order. So Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. Well, this is a little bit of an unusual, uh. Application, as I said before, because of the infrastructure. But I can see it does have a positive side as well. It's very low impact. We've heard a lot about roads. We've heard about fire. We've heard about ATV challenges. So I've got some conditions here. And I think, uh, if I can figure them all out, as I've scribbled them down, uh, I will throw them out here and maybe we could discuss them.
Let's go through and, and, um, just talk about this a little bit. Ask the applicant any questions that we might have and then we'll circle back on any. Any changes to the conditions.
Okay, um, so. One of my big issues is I have not been on the property, but looking at pictures of it, uh, that dry grass is, uh. Very dangerous and, um. Has the applicant considered having some equipment? Now, i- it seems that the applicant is working with, uh, the fire chief of the fire district. But, uh, response times are gonna be long. And on a windy day, um, a grass fire can move very, very quickly. Has the applicant. Uh, considered having some equipment on site and staff to man it? Uh, not huge equipment, something maybe on an ATV with, uh, you know, forty gallons of water that could put something out very quickly. And respond very quickly to a fire.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the applicant to, uh, come back on. Mr. Chair.
Hey there. Yes, this is Andrew. Um, so we have been working closely with the fire chief in terms of. Uh, trying to abide by the county guidelines and standards. Um, we had not considered doing like an ATV and like a, I guess you could say like a mobile. Uh, water unit as such, just because we wanted to have a low impact. Um, that is certainly something that we could explore if, if that was deemed necessary. Um, but, um, but we had not planned on it initially, uh, but would be open to it if, if that was deemed to be. Uh, if that was deemed to be, um, a suitable, um, mitigatory effort.
Uh, okay, um.
Oh, let me just interject here on, on the recommendation, recommended conditions of approval. And number two, it says that you will have. Um, a defensible space. So with that grass, and I did notice that grass on, in those pictures that, that's. Very challenging to deal with that if you were to get a fire there. So it says defensible space and landscaping maintenance. So you'd really have to take care of that and then you'd have to also put down some sort of ground cover for people to walk on. When you, when the ground gets wet, you don't wanna have a bunch of mud.
Yeah, typically what we've done, so, um, when I made a good comments, um, so in addition to obviously the water that's there for the restroom facilities. There will be excess water on site. Um, and so I guess that was the component that I was mentioning with the, having a mobile distribution unit versus, um, something a little more static. Secondarily, uh, around all the fire pit or fire areas, we do lay down a bit of gravel as well. So it creates sort of a, a ring of safety. Kind of in and around that. Um, it's minimal, it's, it's top layer, but it should help to mitigate some of the grass, uh, components there.
I, I would also ask if you've considered, uh. Composting toilets just as, as part of your, um, conservation ethic, not, not related to water because we can't talk about water, but. Just, just because that might make life easier for you and, and there is a conservation element there.
Yeah, though it's definitely something that, um, that we've explored and, and actually, uh, my wife and I have talked about. Um, likely what we will do is we'll probably proceed under the guidance of, of this particular conditional use permit. And then, um, as we continue to go through, I know that there's a couple of other elements, you know, a per test for the soil. Uh, determining whether traditional or sort of a modified, um, wheat field system could be implemented. So. Uh, certainly things that we're, we're definitely open to and, and are, are thinking about exploring.
Thank you. That's all I have until we get to some conditions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Burton?
Um. With regard to, I know we're, we're kind of beaten this to death, um, regarding the fire. Um, is it possible for you guys to have some kind of, um. Like a shield over the flame just to keep sparks from like picking up in the wind and, and being carried off? Is that something you guys would be amenable to instead of just, just a, a round pit that has gravel around it, but something that'll help contain. Um, any little sparks or anything from actually going up and getting carried off?
Yeah, great question. Um, typically what we do is so standard firing, so you know, built obviously up, uh, you know. You know, foot plus sort of a, a little bit elevation of like the rock built around. But we typically also will put sort of a, a grading over top, uh, especially in areas where there's additional fire concern and those. Sort of act as a, a capture both for containing the fire, but also keeping it locked within place.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's, that's really all I had for now, Don.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifford?
Okay, I have several questions here for the applicant. Um, your plan showed a food trailer, if I remembered right. By the, uh, welcoming tent. Is that correct? And an eating area?
So there will be, so there will be picnic tables where people can kind of sit around, um, near the kind of main tent area. Um, I believe in the latest version, the food trailer component was, was taken off. Um, because, so we're, so we're not pursuing that, um, at this time.
Okay, so that proposes the question of personal cooking devices, camp stoves. Um, are they going to be? Are they going to be isolated to that picnic area? Or will they be able to use them at their campsites?
Great question. So even though the tents are fire retarded, we don't allow for people to take like do like their own sort of cooking out in front of their tent. Anything would have to be centralized if they were to do a personal unit in that main reception area, because that's that's where we will one have the the rings sort of a rep or it's not the rings, but the the gravel around the fire rings themselves, as well as the tables or picnic tables to sit at. So so they would have to use that dedicated area because that would also be under the watch of staff at the same time as well.
Okay, so no barbecue grills in that area, nothing like that?
Yeah, that's correct.
For the people to use. Okay. ATV usage.
No, no ATV usage as plans unless the county would want us to have sort of a mobile water dispens unit. Yeah, we don't plan on doing ATV tours or or anything of that nature.
How about people bringing in their ATVs to use in the area?
No, given the the demographic of folks that are coming in, it's it's not actually a very popular activity for them. So most folks are coming in just place to stay and then proceeding north or proceeding south. So so no, so nobody would would be coming on property with with ATVs.
I will add to this as well. We are very clearly marking the trails that people can walk on on our property and do not want people riding around in ATVs or motorized vehicles outside of their vehicle that have come in and parked within a specified distance from the tents. So we will not, no, we will not be allowing that.
Okay. Can you describe what kind of signage you're proposing to have? And where are you going to put the signage?
Yeah, so we we plan to have a sign right at the reception area of where our camp is located, so on our property. You know, within keeping the the boundary that we need to around the surrounding parcels. At this time, we don't plan to have signage anywhere else off the property unless it is, you know, advised by the county for directional purposes or traffic flow, then of course we would be we would abide by that advice and regulation.
Okay.
Will provide good enough directions that they can get there without having to rely on signs and you know, off the main roads or what have you.
Okay, and I'm going back to my earlier question about, and I think Commissioner Burton brought this up also about fencing. You said that you were not going to do fencing in in condition number, and I I don't have it up on my screen. I think it's six, is that the fencing?
Yes, sir. Condition number six.
Is yeah, commit condition number six. I would highly recommend that the entire property be fenced because you will have people wandering off of your paths, going to see if they see antelope or if they see some elk or deer out off of the path, they're going to want to go see that. And we want to keep social trails on other people's property and on the Forest Service state lands. To to basically nil, we do not want them. So I would highly recommend that that six, any fencing shall be wildlife friendly. I would recommend that that be part of the condition that the entire property. And I know Scott, you're working on some of the conditions that the entire the entire property be fenced for private property safety and federal lands or state and federal land safety. And that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, at this point, I do not have any questions. I would like to say that I've listened to other commissioners on this and I am in agreement with their concerns. I will say that I think that Commissioner Clifford noted that in condition number six. It just says that if any fencing is used, it has to be wildlife friendly. I would tend to agree with Commissioner Clifford in his assessment that the entire property should be fenced with wildlife friendly fencing for the reasons he stated. The other thing I think that we need or should be specific and include a sound level requirement, typical of that that we have required for other similar facilities in the past. And that would be just a fifty dB a limit at the property line. Because, okay, the use permits for five years, if someone chooses to utilize the property. The properties on either the east, west, or the south for a home. This may be a very worthwhile provision in the use permit. I like the specificity of that. And as we go along, I have taken a look at the condition for outdoor lighting, which is condition number eight. And I'm proposing rewriting that somewhat in a manner that is similar to what staff has proposed for other lighting conditions myself. Also with that. But I already have that written out in a manner that I think, well, in the future could almost be considered boilerplate for covering how we do this with just about anything of this nature throughout the county in the future. But I don't think it's appropriate to read that out quite yet. There are other commissioners that have some input on this this point too, I think.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Williams.
I think most of my questions had been answered or already asked, but I I'm a little concerned about the directions, getting people in there. Without signage because I just put it into Google Maps and it does not send you a Pleasant View drive. Which seems like the most straightforward. It sends you up the the road right before that. I don't even know what the name of it is, but I'm just saying that people are probably gonna get there using like Google Maps and they're not really that trustworthy when you get out in these areas, so I guess my concern is making sure that they have adequate directions and they they aren't wandering around on all these other roads that Google Maps are sending them. So I guess I would just be, I don't think that can be a condition or anything, but just a heads up to the applicant.
Yeah, absolutely. And and actually, the way that we typically because because most of the times that we're doing these camp locations, we are in fairly remote and sort of off grid setups. So we actually don't use like, oh, hey, type in our address and then and then head up that road. What we actually do is we do a a GPS pin. We find that to be the highest fidelity. And so, you know, that in the accompanying, I, you know, hey, proceed up this road. You'll pass mile marker X and turn right and turn left, you know, so those types of directions are always provided to folks. But we but we utilize the the GPS pin for precisely that reason until, you know, until the area that I think develops more and what have you. It'll always be a concern. And so we typically use that GPS pin because it allows sort of endpoint accuracy for where you need to get to.
Okay, I mean, are there any road signs at all out there? Like is
There there is, yeah.
Has a has a road sign, you'd know if you got there.
Exactly, yeah. So there's a road sign that indicates Woodland Ranch. And then there's a secondary sign, albeit a smaller sign, that indicates Pleasant View.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Okay, Commissioner Best, your backup.
Okay. Let me take a shot at this. It's hard to get all this together so quickly. So it comes down to the conditions and one one of the issues is fire. So I'm going to suggest that we change condition two. To say after property, which is the last word in the current condition two. The facility shall be staffed at all times by staff trained and equipped to extinguish fires as approved by the fire chief. So this kills two birds with one stone. First of all, there should be somebody there all the time. Second of all. In in a high wind situation, which is common, as we all know, in grasslands. If you wait half an hour for somebody to show up and help you, there could be ten acres burned easily. If you've got something, and we could leave this up to the fire chief, to extinguish fire. You know, less than a fire truck, more than a fire extinguisher, I'm thinking an ATV with a tank. Possibly it could even be a hand pump tank, whatever is appropriate by the fire chief. Number four, the dust issue after the word property. Which is almost it's the third lineup from the bottom on that condition, if you're looking at them. Including a dust mitigation plan approved by staff. I I don't think that we can impose, you know, a hundred car trips a day worth of dust on a dusty road on the neighbors. And I know that I I don't know actually how you mitigate dust, that there are things you can put on roads to mitigate dust. But I think that's the obligation of the applicant. I agree with I forget which commissioner it was, Commissioner Clifford. So these folks arrive and they arrive from all over the world, all over the country, and then look around and, oh, my gosh, this is gorgeous. It's wide open. It's the west. Let's go. And they don't realize that they're hemmed in on four sides by property they can't walk on. And so I would propose a condition six, the perimeter of the property shall be fenced with wildlife friendly fencing and signed to prohibit crossing onto state or private land. I think the next one is ten. So if you look up Leave No Trace. You find something called the Center for Outdoor Ethics. That's a five oh one C three, and it has a lot of materials, both to read and materials for sale. And I think this is a good outfit to direct people to, enough so that I would put it in the conditions. Just because it makes it so easy for the applicant. You can, for a couple of bucks, get a sticker with the seven principles of outdoor ethics. Which is basically what we all think they are and stick them in the tents. So after the word materials on condition ten. Advocate shop provide all guests with leave no trace educational materials. Parentheses, see the Center for Outdoor Ethics, period. And then we've got the rest of that talks about prohibit access to adjacent property. We've got that covered above. Number eleven. Is no. Number twelve, there I'm sorry, number thirteen, there shall be no vehicle rentals, and I know that the applicant is not interested in vehicle rentals, but we've seen seven campgrounds in the last three months, four months, five months. And so there are some things I think we should include with each one, and that's one of them. So that was thirteen. Fourteen.
Commissioner Best, can I interrupt for just a second?
Yes, sir.
There shall be no off-road vehicle rentals.
Okay.
Maybe it should just be motorized.
Or motorized vehicle.
What I what I said was there shall be no motor vehicle rentals. Is that okay?
I'd say motorized.
Motorized?
Yes.
Motorized. Yep.
Vehicle rentals? That's thirteen, so fourteen is noise at the property line shall not exceed fifty decibels. Think that's it? Anybody got anymore?
So back to thirteen, is is an electric bike motorized to you?
That's a capital DB. Oh, let me get this right. DB, capital B, I believe.
Capital D, capital B, okay.
Capital. I'm sorry, it is lowercase d, capital B. A, oh. I'll have to get that for you.
Marty can look that up. She's
Yeah, in any event, yeah.
Well, uh.
Electric bike is considered a motorized vehicle because it has an electric motor. The different
Is it really considered a vehicle, though?
It is. It's a transportation vehicle because it can be licensed.
There shall be no motorized vehicles. Vehicle rentals except for bicycles. How about that? Do you want to put that in?
Works for me.
Yeah, that works for me. That that gives them a little room if they do want to do something like that in the future.
Okay, that's number thirteen. They did?
Yep.
Are you ready to move on to eight lighting?
Can I can I ask a question real quick of my fellow commissioners regarding the fencing? That's a whole lot of property defense. Is it reasonable to suggest even just not necessarily a full fence, but some kind of border, even if it's just like a single or a double chain that goes around the property? With signs that say, you know, private property beyond do not trespass or something like that. Does it? Does it need to be a complete fence is is what I'm posing to the rest of my the fellow commissioners?
I think the way it's written, it could be anything.
Okay.
Wildlife friendly just means it can't be forced through ends of barbed wire.
Yeah, I just want I just want to make
I I agree with you. I I agree with you.
Yeah, I just don't want to put a huge financial burden on them because a full fence is is, I think, more than it actually needs. I think just some kind of markers that indicate that go all the way around that say, don't go beyond this. I think this would be plenty. Because then people would have to make a conscious effort to actually go over or under these. And then they flat out know they're doing the wrong thing.
And I I agree with you. Fencing can can be a strand of smooth wire as long as it's got a sign on it that says private property beyond here.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for the the applicant.
Yeah. And this is not open range, right? I don't think there's any cattle wandering around out there that they need to keep out.
No, it's private property, so I don't believe there's any kind of open range. And it's up against state trust land, so I don't know if they do open range on state trust land. But it sounds like there's already a fence along the state trust land, so I don't think wildlife is, or I don't think cattle and ranching is really a concern.
Okay. John.
Yeah.
If you want to hit lighting.
Yeah. This is essentially a rewrite of the entire condition eight. Let me read it to you.
Let me ask it. Let me let me ask you a question here. Marty, are are you getting all this? Or how how do we do this?
They're making changes on the screen right now.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know who's making the changes, but Okay. I don't know who's making the changes, but they're doing a very good job of it. So bear with me here a little bit. Eight, I'd like to have it read as follows. All outdoor lighting. Shall be fully shielded. Narrow spectrum amber LED to the greatest extent possible, period. Next sentence. All class two lighting. Less than. 2,500 lumens. Shall be amber LED. To the greatest extent possible. Next sentence. When the preceding requirements. Cannot be met. Comma. Outdoor lighting. Shall not exceed. 2,700 K. Next word, capital C, capital C, capital T, period.
Say that again, Commissioner Ruggles, capital C.
Capital C, capital C. Capital T, period. You've got to be in there after C. That needs to come out. It stands for correlated color temperature. And then the, the last sentence.
Does the K stay in there?
Uh, that's gotta be a capital K after 2,700. No space, 2,700, no space, capital K. Next. A lighting permit. Shall be approved. Prior to. The installation. Of any outdoor lighting. Period. And then the rest of it, you can strike. Now that is, I'd like to make a couple of comments on that. I did an inventory. Of a lot of what is available for solar lighting. There is solar lighting of various types out there. There is a fair amount of narrow spectrum. Amber LED available because the, the state of Florida. Has allowed counties that are coastal counties to come up with what they call turtle friendly lighting. However, in some cases that may not be available. To satisfy the requirements of what is needed there. Because some of the lumen count is limited for some of that lighting. But amber LED lighting, which is of two different types available other than the narrow spectrum. Would, should satisfy the requirements in that area. Is insofar as dark sky compliance, that should satisfy any requirements necessary. There may be some cases wherein a fixture like a conventional light bulb can be used. And that's. If they do that. And I'm talking conventional LED bulb. It is something that is available. At 2,700 K, that limits the blue light emitted from the LED. Lum, luminaire. So that is some of the rationale behind what I have suggested for this condition. And it's going to be very much the same thing for another case we will be hearing this evening. I would like to compliment staff on all of this because they contributed to what I've just written. I've contributed a little bit and I think it's a good amalgam. And like I said. This is verging on the kind of boilerplate we may need in the future for similar facilities as we go down the road. So thank everybody for listening.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so Commissioner Best, what I'd like to do at this point is to circle Andrew Chen back in and go over these changes with him.
Okay, let's, let's start. Can we start at the, I think the first one was two. And I had at all times in there staffed. Staffed at all times. Personnel needs another L. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, it's actually an N.
Two Ns?
One L.
You learn a lot at these meetings. Two looks good. Four looks good, so.
Mr. Chen, you've been following along here.
I have been, yeah.
Do you agree?
For whoever's sharing their screen, it actually made it really easy to see everything in one place.
Do you agree with these changes?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so is that all the changes?
Can we, can we scroll through? Can we see six now? Where's the next one? Whoa. You can take out the first sentence of six, right?
I wouldn't. I'd leave it there.
Okay. All right.
The reason is it's going to have to be approved by our wildlife planner. The only one that I have a concern about is the being marked to prevent trespass onto private and public lands. If these are the plastic. Signs that we see all over the place, no trespassing, stuff like that. They end up blowing all over the countryside. We find them out in the middle of the woods. I would just leave the fencing and not do or mark to prevent trespassing. With, with any kind of signage. To me, marked would be a signage.
So if you say, take out the or marked two or just or marked.
I would say the property shall be fenced with wildlife friendly fencing.
To prevent.
To prevent trespass onto private and public lands.
And then the wildlife friendly fencing can be defined by the wildlife planner.
Correct.
They're good. Just keep rolling. We're burning a lot of time.
Looks like you've got eight, other than the spelling of proceeding. I don't know why that showed up.
Okay, and 10 kind of takes care of that issue about that reinforces. Campers crossing into private or state land. So that's good. And then. Yeah, there. And then there's.
Roll down to the new 13 and.
13.
Yes, 13, 14.
Motorized vehicle rentals except for bicycles. That's all I got.
Everybody good with that? Looking for a motion.
Oh.
Oh, I'll, I mean, I'll make it. I moved that we approved. CUP a dash 20 dash 060 with conditions as modified.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Hey, who's second?
Commissioner Best.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Burton and a second from Commissioner Best. Commissioner Best, you're up first. Hi.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
Kind of helping you there. Sorry. Commissioner Burton.
I.
Commissioner Clifford.
I.
Commissioner Ruggles.
I.
Commissioner Williams.
I.
And, and I'm also I. Passes unanimous. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much, everyone. Appreciate your time this evening and thanks for all the guidance and the help throughout the process.
Your book. Good luck. CUP dash 20 dash 071.
Bob, this is Jess. Go ahead.
Yeah, bear with me one second. I'm trying to share my screen here and let's start this over again. All right, there it is. Sure, that's about. Bear with me one second. Mr. Chairman, looks like I have a little bit of an issue with the sharing. Hmm, I don't know what's going on. Can everyone see that?
Just click enable content.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, it's not, it's just kind of. Not allowing it to happen for some reason. Not sure why.
Well, I, I can see that. I'm, I'm assuming everyone else can.
Yeah, I think it, it won't move through it. That was the problem. It doesn't, it's just kind of frozen right there. Let me go ahead and shut it down and start it over. There it is. Wow. Can, oh, wait, can you see it? You may not be able to see it though. Can you see the PowerPoint? I don't think you can.
We cannot.
All right.
I see anything, Bob.
Apologize for that.
Bob, this is Zach. If, if you want to email me your PowerPoint, I can put it up and you can just direct me when to change the slide.
Okay, one second. Then let me try one more thing here. All right, can everyone see that now?
Yep.
All right. Had too much, too much luck with these during this last year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This case is the Burke RV as a residence. And then in this case, the owner and the applicant is Matthew Burke of Mesa, Arizona. The location of the property is at 1654 East Vernon Road in Williams, Arizona, or in Valley. The zoning is agricultural residential with a one acre minimum parcel size and the size of the, the parcel size is 1.03 acres. The request is to use an RV as a permanent residence. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. It is in Valley, as you can see, right? Very close to 180 as it comes into Valley. This is the Valley Airport intersection of 180 and 64 is right here. And this is the subject property. There's not much development around it. There is actually a home right across the road over on the north side right there. Otherwise, it's pretty empty out there. Uh, the proposal in this case is the applicant actually plans to use the existing systems on the RV for potable water and wastewater. Without developing anything on the site. And the long-term plan is to buy or construct a permanent residence on the property. This is a site plan showing the subject property. You can see the proposed place, placement of the fifth wheel RV is right down in here. And this is East Vernon Road up here. This is a photograph of the proposed RV. And this is what it looks like out on the land. It's, it's kind of pretty empty, flat, looking back all the way to the peaks. So as part of the citizen participation, property owners within 600 feet of the subject property were notified. Of the proposal on January 14th, 2021, there, there was no requirement for a. Neighborhood meeting because of the, these cases are fairly minor and we don't always require that. The applicant has received no correspondence from other landowners and staff has not received any comments on this application as well. These are the findings of fact for a conditional use permit. Those have been addressed in your staff report. And with that, staff recommends approval of CUP 20071 with the three recommended conditions. With that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Questions for staff? Saying that, is the, is the applicant, or the applicant's representative? Available?
Yes, I'm right here.
Please give us your name and your address.
My name's Matthew Burke. The address is 1654 East Vernon Road, Williams, Arizona, 86046.
Have you read the staff report? Do you agree with it?
Yes, I have. The only thing I would like to say, I do agree with it. I would like to say in order to minimize the use on the road. I, I think I'm going to go ahead and use a eco-friendly composting toilet. That way I don't have to have a septic truck or. A third party come out and dispose of that. I can take care of that myself as well as getting water supply from. From local, the valley right, right around the corner. Instead of having the water truck and septic truck, I think it would be a lot more quiet if I maintain that.
Great, great idea.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Saying that, I'm going to close it and I'll open it up to the public. Is there any public to speak on this? Mazie, you can mute. Anybody from the public could just speak on this? One once, one twice, I'm gonna open this up at the commission level. Starting again, well, I'm gonna reverse this, so I'll start with Commissioner Williams.
Um, yeah, I think this sounds like a, a great plan, so I can make the conditions for approval.
Commissioner Ruggles?
I think the applicant has given us a great deal of thought and even, even without his comments, I can definitely make the findings for approval of this.
Great. Commissioner Clifford?
I can make the findings, I think he's going in the right direction with the composting setup that he's proposing to put in.
Right. Commissioner Burton?
I can make the findings with this.
Commissioner Best?
I can also make the findings, thank you.
Great, looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we approves the UP two zero dash zero seven one with the three conditions as stated in the report. I'll start in that. Okay.
Just one of you eager little beavers are. So who's the second?
Okay, I'll, I'll take the credit for that this time.
Okay, Commissioner Clifford was the first, Commissioner Ruggles was the second. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
And Don Walters, I say aye as well. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you all.
The next one's ZC dash two zero dash zero one seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Bob Short, I'm principal planner here at the county, this case is the Windmill Ranch Zone Change, that's ZC twenty zero one seven. In this case, the property owner is RNM Ranches LLC of Gilbert, Arizona. The applicant is Bruce Luntz of Kalispel, Montana, the existing zoning is G General. Proposed zoning is RC Resort Commercial and the size of this parcel is sixty-one point nine eight acres. The request in this case is a zone change to RC Resort Commercial Zone with approval of the master development plan for the development of a resort. And the resort would include one hundred and fifty-one recreational vehicle sites and one hundred and forty-seven cabins. The RV sites would be leased on an annual basis and the cabins would be sold as fee simple for the structures with long-term leases for the land below the structures. So the structure, the cabins themselves can be bought, you can buy the entire structure, but the land underneath would be leased. The development also includes a general store, clubhouse, laundry and shower facilities, parks, trails, and water features. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. It is right off of Newman Park and it's about five miles north of Mounds Park. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property, it is an inholding in the national forest, although it is right up against I seventeen, it's completely surrounded by national forest. Nearest property is about one-third of a mile north of here on Forest Road seven seventy-two. Here's some background on the subject property. This parcel has apparently been here for a long time, I looked back at assessor's maps, going back to nineteen sixty-nine and they showed the property in its current configuration. And I believe it's probably been in, been that way for quite a bit longer than that. The it has been owned by the current owners for over thirty years. This property's been historically used for ranching and horseback riding operations. Currently, the current development of the property is, is a cabin, several stockpens and shelters, various outbuildings, two large water tanks, and there's also two ponds on the property. There are also two non-conforming billboards on the property and I apologize in the staff report, I believe I said three, but I have corrected that now. This is a photo of the subject property, this is on the north side looking south and you can see some of that development over there on the left-hand side, the stockpens and things. And then this is further back into the property, also looking south, but back in the middle where there's basically a very large meadow surrounded by forest, as you can see. This is the conceptual site plan and this will serve as the master development plan, it's just a little bit different way of describing that. And as you can see in pink, you'll see the RV sites on toward the, closer to the highway, to the, to the west. And then behind those, you can see the cabin site spread out through here. There are, these two ponds are existing. The applicant would, wants to enhance those and actually run a stream between the two ponds. You can see the stream running through here, there's a trail along the stream. Trails would go throughout the site, you can see several trails throughout the site. After discussions with the national forest, the applicant has indicated that they probably won't have all of these connections to the forest, understanding the impacts that can have. So that could be cut back to, you know, maybe one or two trails instead of the four, I believe, four or five that's shown here. Over on this side, they're showing the water storage facilities and the sanitary sewer processing plant. I have talked to the applicant and that is subject to change, that might not be the best place for it. This is, as you can see, a conceptual site plan. This is the phasing plan for the development. Phase one would be further south and then phase two and phase three, you can see the different phases in here. This is the schematic landscape plan. The applicant, of course, would like to retain as many trees as possible because the ponderosa forest is a great place, you know, for such a development, for resort development. If you look at the red, that indicates areas where some trees would be removed, not all of them, but some, so that they could have building pads for cabins in those areas. Otherwise, they would also plant a few other trees, both deciduous and conifer trees, all native, you know, throughout the site. And also, they would retain native grasses, but also add some more native grasses that would be irrigated. This is the lighting plan, the, the blue asterisks represent sixteen-foot-high pole luminaires. The red asterisks also represent that as well, there's space throughout the site. The red ones are around the facilities, I think there's only three of those that I see. And then they also propose these turret thirty-two-inch-high twenty-five-watt lamps. You can see these smaller pink asterisks along the trail in the front right there and then around the pond areas. This is a, an example of a, of a resort RV site. As you can see, they all would have a parking spot for the RV. And remember, this is on a one-year, this is on an annual lease, the applicant does not intend to have leases for a few days or a week. They intend to have long-term leases for these. And each one would come with a different option for a garage. If you look down here, you can see the different options, there's a full garage option, an option with a garage and a bath, or this is just a casita, so you would kind of pull your RV along another small cabin to give you more living space. And this is a sample of a cabin envelope. You can see the, the layout here, this is just a sample, there would be different models. And then the, these are some of the design options, some of the types of cabins that might be developed on this site. Want to talk a little bit about access, access would come off of, of course, the Newman Park exit off of I seventeen, that's about half a mile north of the property. And this is Forest Road seven seventy-two, which would provide access to the property. And the applicant has been working with the Forest Service and they have agreed to pave this road to Forest Service standards, whatever standards the Forest Service requires. This this slide is about the utilities on the site. They would use onsite wells to provide both water and fire protection through a water main system and water services. The wastewater system would also include gravity sewer lines and an onsite treatment plant. The water would be treated to a level that would allow it to be used in the lakes for the recirculating stream and for the onsite landscaping. In terms of fire safety, the closest fire district to this site is Mounds Park, it's only five miles away, so it is relatively close, especially compared to some of the other things that we've seen over the years, some of the development proposals. And I also wanted to mention that the Forest Service has plans to thin the forest in this area, which will make it much more safe from wildfires. There is a flood plain on the north end of the property and you have to understand that the flood, the flood plain is shown there and I'll show you a map in just a second. But the elevations have not been established for that flood plain, so we don't know exactly where it is, but there's a good indication. There is a flood plain there. What the applicant would like to do is delineate the flood plain and then channelize it along the frontage of the property you, through the FEMA letter of map amendment process, that's a process, it's called a LOMA. And what that does is that it allows you to move the flood plain and that's what they would like to do. Because that would allow them more space for development or that would allow them to move the flood plain so that it wouldn't affect the development. And this is the map of the flood plain, you can see it coming down here. And like I said, this is just an idea of where the flood plain is. What they would like to do is take it and move it over to this frontage, channelize it along this frontage. But they would, the, the way that water runs into the site and runs out of the site would not change. Right now, primarily water comes into the site and just sits there. I think all of us that live in this area have been by this site during the spring and seen all the water that's retained on there, it just kind of sits there and percolates in to the ground. This is a picture of that flood plain, you know, when I first saw this, I thought the water came out of these culverts and ran this way, but actually this fills up and the water, and the water runs into them and runs north. Want to talk a little bit about wildlife, there were a couple of wildlife issues on this property. The wildlife planner has indicated that there may be species of greatest conservation need and special status plants. And that's especially related to the ponds and the water features on the site. So she does recommend that those be preserved and remain accessible to wildlife. And because of that, there is a condition that requires that the existing fence be converted to a wildlife-friendly fence. The applicant's plan, actually for the water features, is to enhance them and that includes the ponds at both ends and the stream and to stock them with fish for fishing. And one of the concerns that comes up from that is that if you introduce non-native fish into an area, it could get washed downstreams, downstream whenever it floods in this area and it could threaten federal listed fish in the area downstream. Now downstream from this, if you go, the water goes north into a canyon and it ends up in Oak Creek, so that, that is a concern. So to mitigate this problem, what the applicant is proposing is that they would separate the stream that runs between the two ponds from the flood plain. As I said before, the flood plain would be channelized along the frontage of the property on that west side. So what they would do is they would contain those fish in those two ponds and in that stream that runs between the two, so they're separated from the flood plain and they would not wash down the stream. And this is a picture of one of those ponds on the property as it exists now. The applicant does propose to enhance that. There's been, the Commission has had quite a bit of discussion about OHVs on this site and on other sites. The applicant has provided a management plan for the resort and is working with National Forest personnel on OHV issues. They do propose an onsite kiosk that would provide educational material primarily for guests with OHVs. So that would just be a kiosk on the side, they could go by, pick up information. Staff has written a condition that would require mapping and other information to be at that kiosk. As we talked to the National Forest Service, we found out there's actually a trail system, an OHV trail system located to the east of the site. So that should mitigate some of the issues with OHVs because it is an area planned for OHVs. As you may know, Mounds Park has a lot of OHVs, so there's a connecting forest roads with Mounds Park and I believe that's the reason they're using this as a they have developed this OHV trail system, OHV means off-highway vehicles. There, there are also very few homes in this area, unlike some of the cases I've seen recently, so that would also reduce the impacts to residential properties. In terms of citizen participation, because of the COVID nineteen pandemic and very little development in this area, the applicant was allowed to notify neighbors and invite them to comment on the project in lieu of a neighborhood meeting. So because there aren't that many properties around, staff did require them to notify neighbors within one mile of the subject property and invite them to comment. The applicant has provided one letter from a neighbor in support of the proposal. Staff's included that in the staff report or attached to the staff report. Staff has not received any comments on this zone change. And I wanted to talk about a few of the most significant issues that, that I see with this particular proposal. The first one is inholdings, I've included policies from the comprehensive plan in the staff report and one of them discourages commercial development within inholdings. An inholding is a private property that's surrounded totally by national forest. So however, staff looks at this as a little different than most inholdings since it is right on Interstate seventeen. It's within half a mile of the Newman exit, so it has access and it also has utilities. And this is kind of an appropriate place from this standpoint for resort development. Also want to talk about gateways. This is obviously very visible from vehicles on Interstate seventeen and that is a gateway to the Flagstaff area and to Coconino County. But I do want to point out that the comprehensive plan policies discourage industrial development and gateways, but not commercial development. I spent quite a bit of time looking to the comprehensive plan and that is what I found. Also, it should be pointed out, this is a well-designed development and the applicant has also agreed to remove those two legal non-conforming billboards and that's consistent with comprehensive plan policies. This is a picture showing Interstate seventeen and of course, you can see that the subject property is quite visible from I seventeen. And this is a picture of one of those billboards that would be removed. And the last issue is flood plains, comprehensive plan policies address the protection of both flood plains and groundwater. In this case, the applicant does propose channelizing the flood plain to move it away from areas proposed for development. Now, why, while this proposal moves the flood plain, it does not alter upstream and downstream drainage patterns, so those all stay the same. It's just the onsite part of it that is moved and channelized. And of course, engineering permits would regulate the quality of water that ultimately drains into Oak Creek. So it's really important that the water quality coming off of the site is regulated because obviously Oak Creek is a very important waterway. These are the findings for a zone change. I have addressed those in the staff report. And with that, staff recommends the commission forwards a recommendation of approval of ZC 20017 to the Board of Supervisors with the recommended conditions. With that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
I'll go through the list here, Commissioner Williams, any questions?
Um, yeah, maybe this would be for the applicant, but Bob might know. Are the cabins, so these year leases, is it, you know, for season use?
Commissioner Williams, so the, I'm actually not sure of how seasonal it is, but it is an annual lease for the RVs. So the applicant probably could answer how long, yeah, if it is for season use or not.
Okay.
So that would be a good question for them.
Okay, I'll ask them.
Okay.
Commissioner Ruggles?
I don't have any questions for staff at this point.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I have one question. Mr. Short, when they are working with the Forest Service for Forest Service Road 772, is that paving the entire section of 772, including this two-track, which is part of that Forest Service road to access their development? And is it going to go all the way up to the Forest Service boundary of the property on the other end?
Yeah, my understanding, we can look at the site plan real quickly here. And you can see the forest road, this is the Forest Road 772 coming down from Newman Park exit and it goes all along the entire frontage, looks like it goes all the way to the edge right there. The commission, I mean, the, excuse me, the applicant, they can clarify that if they have more information, but it appears that's what they're proposing. I mean, if you want access to your development, you certainly want to have it paved as far as possible.
No, that's fine. I didn't know if they were going to go even further than that. I caught part of that, but I missed part of that in, when I was going through the, through the packet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clifford.
Commissioner Burton?
I don't have any questions for staff, just the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner Best.
Yeah, it's certainly a dream come true to get rid of those billboards. That's nice. One issue, and I don't know if you've talked with the applicant about this, maybe this is an issue for the applicant, but the, the look from the highway, when you're looking at the ends of a bunch of RVs is not going to be that great. This is a gateway to Flagstaff and to Northern Arizona. I'm wondering if, if we could do some plantings, which eventually would help soften the look. Do you have a detailed plan for the plantings yet, or is this kind of general?
Mr. Best, this is the schematic landscape plan and as you can see there, I mean, it is, it is pretty general at this point. Yes, that is, that is correct. But you can see some trees along the front here. These are actually, and I, we have not, honestly, we have not talked about height or anything, but I believe the idea was to plant some, some berms along here or have some berms along here and then they would be planted with trees because I definitely agree that screening would be nice. I know on this end, there are more existing trees and then it opens up into meadow more on this end where the, it's more open for views. Remember that, and of course, they will be RVs, of course, but they, they'll, this, this shows you the site, which has a garage, which is also kind of a, can be a cabin. One option is to actually make a little casita, which is a cabin. But yes, it still is RVs, that, that certainly is correct. And the applicant can probably fill in more information about that.
Yeah, it can be challenging to get large plants going in an area that's, that's marshy. So yeah, we'll talk to the applicant. That's all I have, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Best.
Thank you, that's all the questions for you, Mr. Short. So we'll open this up to the applicant, is the applicant, or the applicant's representative here, would you like to address the commission?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Chair Walters. My name's Bruce Lutz. I am a senior landscape architect and land planner for WGM Group. My address is 431 First Avenue East, Kalispell, Montana. We have offices in Missoula, Kalispell and Bozeman. And I've known one of the owners of this project for probably 30 years and that's why I'm helping him down in Arizona with this project. I'd also like to mention that Steve Lewis with Ritok Powell, civil engineer and vice president of that company is on board tonight. And so between the two of us, we, we would like to answer any questions you might have, both on the land planning aspect of this project and the civil and infrastructure part of this project. I'd also like to mention that Tom Klein, Scott Lawrence and Chris Holly are the three owners of this project. I am the applicant, but they, they are the ones that are paying us to, to, to do our consulting. So I wanted to make it clear, those are the owners of this project and they are also on board tonight, if you might have any questions for them. First of all, I'd like to thank Bob Short for being a great communicator and working with us on this project. I think we've had lots of conversations back and forth and he's helped us, I think, make this a better project. The other thing I'd like to mention is that, and probably the most important element of this project is, this is in no way any kind of an overnight stay project. This is a, a long-term ownership idea, both the RV sites and the cabin sites. The whole intent is, is to create a, if you will, a rustic neighborhood in this location where people have pride of ownership and, and they are good neighbors to each other and to the national forest that surrounds this project. I'd also like to mention that we, after our last study session meeting, we had a meeting again with the Coconino National Forest, Sean Murphy in particular. And Bob Short was in attendance as well and we discussed the OHV issue again. And I think that's one of the things that came out of that was the condition that Bob mentioned about education and an informational kiosk that will be implemented on the project to, to make sure people understand and respect the forest and respect the use of the forest with the, with an OHV. The other thing that came out of our follow-up conversation with Sean Murphy is that there is in fact going to be a forest thinning project around this site. And in fact, many of the trees have already been marked and we feel this will be an enhancement for the fire safety aspect and, and also probably from an aesthetic perspective, opening the forest up a bit for, for viewing. I would like to also stress in terms of the trails that we are showing currently on the, on the, on the site plan, that we, we talked to Sean about, you know, the appropriate places to make those entrances and exits from the forest and, and they probably will more likely line up with the power. If you look at that linear area below the, the lower NFS initials there, yeah, Bob's got it there. That's, that's the appropriate place to enter the forest in terms of impact and use. So we'll, we'll probably reduce the number of ingress and egress points that we have and line them up with that power corridor a little bit better. I'd like to kind of in conclusion for my little statement here is just mention that we have looked at the staff report in, in great depth. We think it was well-written and we concur with the findings and conditions of approval in their entirety on, on the staff report. Beyond that, again, both Steve and I are available for any questions you might have going forward and appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, thanks for getting rid of those, those signs. You heard my comment earlier on the issue of landscaping and the view from the highway. Any, any thoughts on that? I, I know it's challenging, that's a lot of, that's, that's a long way to plant trees.
Right.
But you.
Absolutely. Absolutely have an answer to that now, and I'll start by answering all those questions. I meant to do that before I quit. On, in terms of use, annual use, this is intended to be an all-season project and resort. So that's the answer to the, one of the questions came up. The paving of the access road will be, and we've discussed this again with Sean Murphy, from the interchange, from the Newman Park interchange to the south boundary of our project. So that's our commitment for paving where, where Bob has the arrow there. And then landscape, that, one of the reasons Tom hired me on this project was, was the landscape architecture element of this project. And although it's not fully vetted at this point, our intent is to invest a lot of effort and money in landscaping of the buffer between the improved access road and Interstate 90 and the project area itself. So your, your comment about elevating things so plants are, are better survived is a great point and our intent is to have quite a bit of landscape mounding on that west side and in, in addition to that, planting conifers for the most part along that corridor. And, and I think we want to do it in such a way that it doesn't look contrived. So as you can see, the, the, the yellow areas are kind of an initial idea of, of the mounded areas and, and those are done in such a way that it, it looks more natural and the screening will look more or less, less contrived than it could if we just build linear mounds along that entire boundary. So to answer your question.
Project for sure.
We, to answer your question, we're very committed to, to buffering that area and, and hear you loud and clear about what, what we can do to, to lessen the impact of looking at, at those RV sites, although I do also believe that we'll do kind of a harmonious job of, of implementing the garages and/or casitas in such a way that they, they are aesthetically pleasing in terms of a view from the west.
One question is, do you plan to allow your, I guess their owners and tenants to do vacation rentals with their properties?
We, we at this point, and, and the ownership can, can chime in if, if I mistake this, but that is not at all our intent. The intent is to have owner, owner pride, owner, ownership of, long-term ownership on all of these properties within the resort.
Yeah, I, I'm involved a little in vacation rentals myself. And, and I think you'll have to be very particular because, you know, if there are empty cabins there, you can make a lot of money. If you, if you own one of these cabins and you can only use it five weeks of the summer and can rent it out the other 10 weeks. That's a big difference in the, in the clientele that you will have and a big difference in the amount of education you'll have to do to keep from tearing up the forest.
You know, I hear you loud and clear, we have the same issue in the Flathead Valley up here in Montana. So I'm, I'm completely sympathetic with what, what you just said.
Yeah, we've had, I think, I mentioned earlier, I think it's seven of these in the last four months. And so we're learning as we go, but one thing, one thing we're learning is we need to get ahead of the education process. So we don't do damage and I can guarantee you, most of those garages, many of them anyway, are going to have razors in them and that's just the current reality. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Burton?
Yeah, um, one of the things that I would like to ask, I didn't notice anything in what I was reading regarding the RV conditions, as far as physical condition. I've been to numerous RV parks that don't permit, for example, anything over the age of 2015. I, I would like there to be some kind of requirement for physical appearance of the RVs that are onsite. If they're, you know, free of fading, free of visual damage, that kind of stuff. And if they're covered, I'd like to, you know, make sure that whatever they're covered with is free of any damage and fading, just because this is a gateway. I think trying to keep it as clean and nice looking as possible. I don't think it's going to be too much of an issue for you guys. I just want to have something in place beforehand because I mean, the people that are going to be leasing these lands are not going to be people who have inexpensive equipment is my guess, but I'd like to, to put that in there so that there's some kind of, some kind of, you know, understanding that what's sitting there is going to not be, you know, something that looks dilapidated or anything like that.
You know, I, I think that's an excellent point and if, if you want to add that to one of the conditions, we would certainly cover that in our covenants as well.
Okay, I think that was my biggest concern. So.
We will have, by the way, we will have architectural guidelines as well in this project. So I think we can cover that best in, in that kind of a document as well.
Yeah, like I said, I've been to numerous places where they flat out ban certain things and it's becoming more and more common for that, just so that they can maintain aesthetically pleasing environment.
Yeah, good comment, thank you.
Commissioner Best, would you please mute? Commissioner Clifford, your.
Um, my questions have been answered, so I have no questions.
Perfect. Commissioner Ruggles?
Okay. Mr. Lutz, I'm not sure you're the right guy to address my questions here, but I think with everyone there with you, we'll get there. My question is primarily how you intend to utilize the ground lease for the cabins and to a lesser extent, the lease for the RV spaces in terms of things like outdoor storage, structural changes, changes to the lighting, that sort of thing. I am on the board of a community land trust, which operates in a very similar manner. And we use the ground lease to manage some of those things. And we use the ground lease to manage some of those things. The condition of the property around the cabin, as for instance, the condition of the property around our our houses. That's how we regulate that. So do you anticipate that sort of thing being a part of the leases and the ground lease for the cabins with this project?
You know, I I I think the two ways we would cover that would be. Through the covenants and the architectural standards and also. I think you've got a great idea there that we could roll that into the ground lease document. And maybe cover it in in both ways to enforce that a little bit better than than usual.
Yeah, the the reason I mentioned that is because it is very much to the benefit of, say, the buyer of one of the cabins. That it enhances the value of it if it is very saleable and at the top of the market. When and if they decide to sell the property or sell the the structure that's on the property. So that's the reason why I asked about that in addition to other things that I discussed in the question. So thank you. It's very good answer. Appreciate it.
Any other question, Mr. Rose?
That's enough for right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Um, I thought Commissioner Ruggles had a great point there. And I was just wondering, are the cabins all insulated? Obviously, if they're for year round use, I would assume they are.
Yes, same.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that was really my main question.
Okay, I have, this is Don Walters, I have a few. Commissioner Williams, would you mute? So on the discussion of the burrs, about ten miles south of here, there's a. In holding subdivision called Foxborough Ranch Estates. In there, they they did a similar thing. They dug some ponds. Or or made some ponds larger and use that to build some burns. To help block out the noise from Interstate seventeen. And they they also have trees and bushes that that are. Well, similar to the the trees that we have here, but the elk don't eat them. So it might be something that you want to go there and talk to them and get some ideas. The other thing that they did was they put sterile fish in there because they also have the problem of those fish washing out into Oak Creek. I would ask you if you thought about providing any water for the wildlife back along the forested buffer area?
You know, I one of one of the thoughts was, and and I think Bob covered in his staff report, was that. Retaining the two ponds is important for for that factor. As far as supplemental water on the east side. That's something we could take under advisement. I we haven't discussed it, but that's that's certainly a good idea.
Yeah, if you could provide one or two steel troughs along that that border. I would keep some of the more shy animals back in the trees and away from the highway. Because you're going to have a attractive nuisance with those two ponds there and. And the interface with people and and the highway right there.
Good idea. Thank you.
The other thing that that we've done in some of our subdivisions is is we put in the CCNRs where. They can't sub rent the property unless it's six months at a time. So by by writing that in there, we were able to control some of the Airbnbs. So just just an idea for you.
Thanks.
That's all I have. Any other? Questions for the applicant? Seeing that, I'm going to close it and open it. Anybody from the public that would like to speak, it's so please raise your hand. Anybody from the public to speak? I'm going to close it and open it at the commission level. I'll start with you, Commissioner Williams.
I I I actually really like this plan, you know, there's through the years, there's we've seen different plans. For this property and I think this does a pretty good job of. Meeting some needs and fitting into this kind of odd spot right on the interstate, but. Within the forest. I I can actually make the findings for this the zone change.
Correct. Commissioner Ruggles?
Well, I'm pretty much with Commissioner Williams on what she just said. I I do, however. I'm going, well, I will propose a slight modification to condition number two on the lighting. Which will read almost identically with what I proposed for our first case this evening. And it's. Very simply a matter of addressing the fact that there may be some lighting for which either. Narrow spectrum amber LED or amber LED lighting. Is not available out there in the marketplace or has not yet been developed for the specific needs. In some parts of this project. So I I don't think it's appropriate to come up with that wording right now, but it. Before we end up and when there's a motion made and any other changes, I would be happy to read that for you. It's essentially identical to what I discussed before.
Great. We'll come back on that.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Clifford?
Um, I think it's going to be a good project. I'm going to miss the cattle being out there when I'm driving up. Back home from down down south, but I can make the findings to approve this.
Great. Commissioner Burton?
Um, I would like to add in a condition that I brought up earlier, so it would be condition fourteen. All RVs and RV coverings onsite will maintain an aesthetically pleasing appearance, free of any damage and fading.
Great.
Other than that, I mean, I think it's a really good project. I also am going to miss the sunflowers. When they're in bloom in this particular field, but of the things we've seen come through. This definitely is a more appealing project than anything else I've seen.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Beth?
Yes, sir. I think this is lots going to depend on on the quality of of what these folks put together. As I've said. Offsite impacts are not something that applicants usually think about. But we're learning how important they are and hopefully this applicant will. Come back in five years for renewal and we will be able to say that off pack offsite impacts have been. Under control and the Forest Service will give us a good report. It's a hard thing to do with these. These modern off road vehicles that'll do fifty miles an hour down a dirt road. And the roads are never really repaired. It's a it's a it's a tough situation. I'm going to suggest that we. Work on condition eleven a little bit to say that. Each guest site will be provided with leave no trace materials. See the Center for Outdoor Ethics. To encourage guests. And then the rest of it goes on, dot, dot, dot.
Commissioner Beth, hold that thought. Staff, would you please pull up the conditions of approval? Let's go ahead and start making these changes now and work our way back down. We'll work our way up, I guess. So we're at eleven is what we wanted to do. Okay, Commissioner Beth, go ahead.
Uh, so on eleven, I guess we'll make this a new sentence. Starts after closed.
Oh, Bob.
And let me make sure this makes sense. Each each guest site will be provided with leave no trace materials parentheses. See the Center for Outdoor Ethics parentheses to encourage guests. I'm sorry.
We lost him.
I I lost you. We're on the last sentence. So we're going to start and we're going to eliminate the pamphlet. We'll also advise guests. We're going to eliminate that. And instead of that, we're going to say each guest site will be be provided with leave nose trace materials. Parentheses, see the Center for Outdoor Ethics parentheses. To encourage guests to not leave trash in the forest, et cetera. Center for Outdoor Ethics. To encourage guests. Then the rest of it stays the same. To encourage guests to not leave trash in the forest. Comma. Be respectful of others in the forest. Comma. And be respectful of the natural environment. Including the animals and vegetation. Then I propose a number fifteen. Let's see, I think fourteen was the one about upkeep. Fifteen would be no motor, there shall be no motor vehicle rentals except bicycles. And just one more issue just to to the applicant. I I don't want to make it a condition, but we had discussed in a in another one of these, many of the. Another one of the many of these that we have done. Some sort of a relationship between the Forest Service. And the community on a volunteer basis, which would be be both. A help to the Forest Service because they're always understaffed, working on some of these trails. And also an educational experience. For the community to kind of get some skin in the game of maintaining. The ecology of this area. Be both good for the Forest Service, good for the community. And that's just the suggestion while I have your attention. Thank you. Other than that, I I can make the findings. I hope that it looks pretty from the highway in ten years.
Commissioner Burton?
Yeah, um. So Bob, I would say all RVs. And RV coverings onsite will maintain an aesthetically. Pleasing appearance. Aesthetically as an A. Spelled correct. I'll get it. I gave you a different one.
Put A in front of the E and then take the L, one of the L's away.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's that's how I had it written was A E.
Who else are?
Yeah. Aesthetically pleasing appearance. Free of any damage and fading. That's all I think I need on that one.
Hey, anything else?
Bob? It's Steve Lewis. I think right before aesthetically, you put and it's supposed to be and. There you go. Thanks.
Good catch. Okay, we good there?
Yeah, that looks good to me.
Commissioner Clifford?
Looks good to me.
Good. So you can find, make the findings?
Yes, sir. I can make the findings.
Thank you. Mr. Ruggles?
Okay, I'm going to read a minor rewrite of condition number two. And.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, I I have the same thing you just you just said for the Wonder Cap in yellow right here. Is that similar or?
Let's see, I don't think, let me check. Is there any possible way you could blow that up just a little bit? I have a small screen here. Thank you. That excellent. It'll take me a minute to do a little bit of comparison here.
Yeah, I might go down a little bit because my condition, the can, the original condition is right there above it.
Yeah, this is a, I think you've got the whole thing there exactly.
In yellow?
The in yellow, yes, that is correct. And the rationale for that again is as I stated. There may be instances where there is no amber LED lighting of any kind. In the marketplace available, although that may be a rather limited circumstance, nevertheless. It gives the applicant the ability to deal with it in a reasonable manner and twenty seven hundred K. Correlated color temperature eliminates a great deal of the blue and green lighting that poses problems for the observatories. So that being said, you got it.
Okay, good.
Well, one other thing, I I would like to compliment you and other staff members who have written the. Lighting requirements in conditions for use permits and zonings. That has been a tremendous help to me in coming up with a statement like this. And I think will cover all the bases, at least until we get a new lighting ordinance in place. So thanks very much, Bob.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ruggles. We appreciate it.
Ms. Williams?
Um, yeah, that looks good.
No changes? No changes, no approval? Can, can you make the findings?
Oh, yes, I can make the findings.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I, I only have, oh, on number five, I would like to add in here, I'm looking for a little help. I'd like to add in here that they're gonna provide two water locations at the east side of the property for wildlife.
And make it short wildlife too, not, you know.
Right, like, like drinker type things, only they would have a water source.
Yeah, but something that a raccoon or a skunk could drink out of as well as a, an elk.
Should I say for a small, small wildlife, small game? I mean, I wouldn't call it game, probably.
Part of the property for all wildlife.
Okay, that's good.
And then, I don't know if our wildlife planner is, is in the audience here? Does anybody know?
I think she was earlier.
Yeah, I'd like you to weigh in on this about the sterile fish. We use sterile fish at, at, uh, Rainbow Trout Farm, which is right on Oak Creek. And we use those at Foxborough as well. Is, is that something that we can modify this to let them, um, design these water features so that they may still be in the, in the floodway? But they have sterile fish that aren't gonna pollute the ecosystem.
Yeah, that's an interesting idea. Um, I have talked with the applicant and they were telling me that the water features would be out of the floodplain and would be designed so that floodwaters could not get into the water feature. So if that's the case, that's ideal. Um, cause it'd be preferable if the fish, even if they are sterile, did not reach any listed populations downstream at all. Because they can harm fish species. And if they're not reproducing, then the harm would be of shorter duration. But, um, yeah, that is an idea, but if indeed their water feature is out of the floodplain, it should be fine.
Yeah, and it, in, in person, I haven't designed it towards out of there just because of the amount of sediments that go in there. It's really hard on the fish. But it's just an option I'd like to throw out there for them.
Chairman, Chairman Walters, if you look at the condition number five, it, it does say the wildlife planner shall approve the design of the water feature to ensure non-native fish remain out of the floodplain or not washed downstream. So it does have, it does get, put that back on the wildlife planner to approve the, the design.
It does, and she can, she can work with them, but sterile fish is, or that's, that's the, uh, the norm.
Can I make a quick comment about the drinkers?
Sure.
Um, can maybe we add, uh, that they have escape ramps for small animals that fall into the drinker?
Oh, yeah, okay. No traps for chipmunks.
And there could just be an expanded metal mesh that goes down into the water so they can get out.
Exactly, yeah.
With most drinkers. So now I'm gonna ask the applicants, are you all right with the changes and, and, and the totality of this?
You know, I, uh, I think we're fine with everything. I'm, I'm a little confused with the terminology in item eleven. If, if you could maybe put that up on the screen.
Okay, we'll go back to that.
Uh, at the end of the, uh, end of the, uh, condition. The term guest is, um, confusing to me. These are residents, uh, more or less permanent residents. Is, is that the intent to, to, uh, to give them this, um, this kind of, um, mandate or what was the intent? Cause we do not have guest sites proposed on the project.
What if you say each resident and guests, cause the residents will have guests and they'll look be impacting as well?
Yeah. I just wanted more coverage than a kiosk. You've got three hundred units here. And I just doubt that everybody's gonna get to the kiosk. So, at this, uh, Center for Outdoor Ethics for, you know, five dollars, you can get the seven elements of leave no trace, which is just what you think they are.
Okay, I, I just, I wasn't.
Buy those materials, you know, you stick them on the wall or what, just somehow communicate with each unit. Um, it, it's a real challenge to communicate the conservation ethic to people who aren't familiar um, with this environment. And, um, we're seeing that challenge manifest in many, many places. And, um, this is just an effort to try to
Sure.
do the best we can to educate people.
And, and just so you know, there, there will be, uh, waste management on the resort and, and containers, you know, and, and all those things that you would expect as well.
Yeah, I mean, this is more, uh, to get people to take care of the forest and not care it up.
Gotcha.
Would it, would it be good to say each home site, each RV and home site will be provided with leave no trace materials?
That sounds fun. And this is in addition to the kiosk, which, you know, maybe the maps need to be mounted in a kiosk.
Mr. Clifford, how about cabin, each RV and cabin site, since they're really more.
Or, or cabin site, home site, you know, they're, they're, they're gonna be, you know, there, it's a stick-built, uh, structure. So, yeah, each cabin site, yeah. Does that help?
Yeah. And, and, uh, just, uh, another thought, actually came from one of the owners, is on the kiosk, we'll have a a code reader situation where, where people can read, um, you know, read the, uh, the code and, and, and the information will come up on their phones as well.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
Yeah, great.
What else? Is that, uh, all your changes? Everybody good?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it.
I'm good.
Okay, if I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, I'll rec, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of ZC dash two zero dash one seven with the, with the conditions as modified.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a first with Commissioner Burton and who's the second?
I think John was the second.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles is the second. So Commissioner Best, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
This is Don Walters. I also say aye. I'd like to congratulate you guys on a great design. Mr. Lutz, you did a great job and, uh, I'd also like to thank somebody that's been real quiet, Richard Morrison, for finding the right people. We gave you a hard time before. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, so it all passes. Good luck with this. Let me know if I can help you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're down to the all to the public for items not on the agenda. Any publics like to talk? Okay, thank you all. Good night.
Hey, thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, all.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Talk to you tomorrow night, John.
Ah, you bet. More fun.
Yep, back to back. Have a good night, everyone.